Dear Emily, Father, we come to you today with just thank you for the many blessings you receive. Lord, we just ask that you be with each and everyone here tonight. Lord, live it. We just ask that you lead our hearts and our decisions for the county. Lord, we just ask a blessing on all the citizens that are here. Lord, we just ask for traveling mercies as they wake home. Lord, we just ask a blessing upon all those that are sick, Lord, and their loved ones. Give them peace and understanding. Lord, all this we ask in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Mr. Mayor, would you lead us in place of leading, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dana Ferguson. Kenneth Miller.
Here.
Rodney Preston. Leah Dye.
Here.
Lauren Furniture.
Here.
Gary Fur.
Here.
Sunny Hall.
Here.
Phil Melton.
Here.
Doug Beakers.
Here.
Shell Hill.
Here.
Janet Picken.
Here.
Roseanne Ward.
Here.
Cheryl Hicks.
Here.
Ronnie Kopper.
Here.
Mary Powers.
Here.
Angie Kern.
Here.
Don Patterson.
Here.
Ward's Plan.
Here.
Have a forum. Need approval of the agenda.
Not true.
Have a motion by Angie. Second. Kenneth, have a second. Place the pair. Mr. Jonathan Ferrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, committee members. Uh, wish my goodness. Please, everybody, hear me. I'm gonna step over to the computer. I have some things to present. And I will be a little unorthodox being part of this citizen, uh, comment time period. I wanna go over some things, give an update on the work we've done thus far, and post some information to the commission to consider and give me some information to report on. I will not be able to physically be present at next month's meeting, so if we can address all of these tonight, I can be available by phone. But some of you are time sensitive with the General Assembly in session.
Another permission.
Thank you.
Know it's hard for so many to see the string back there, but you're lucky. Most of the ones I've received is canned. We will explain this thing to you.
I should mention that there's a little, this.
Mr. Barry, there's a personnel who we've actually hired during the county's meetings or the deputy of state of where they pay us. It's been a long time, a lot of loopholes that we don't run. We took her on board and since we've had her, she'll be telling you how much money that she's actually gained for this county. She's done a really excellent job. She was very proud of what we've got with it because it's loopholes that you just can't keep over. The state stands with the state and giving you tax. She's, she's working with her own daughter or something there. What they're allowing is what you do.
I apologize. I'm trying to get this to open wide so the numbers are visible, but I've got one call. Let me get my computer. I apologize for doing this.
You're all right. She's compaying property several, actually millions of dollars in time, but I wanna hold it tight. She actually found that kind of money and bring it back into the coffers during her time.
Thank you. And follow up on, uh, Mr. Chairman's spoken. I became a part of this team two years ago, uh, with permission from this council to review your revenue streams that are currently out there and see what was missing from them. And our intent was, as you all stated to me, we wanna see what is out there that we need to tighten up on, stop losing before we look at any type of property tax or anything along that line. So your goal, along with the mayor's goal, had been to look out for the taxpayers and make sure that the money's coming in, that's supposed to be coming in or being paid by the people that it's supposed to be paid by, or coming into the county like they're supposed to and not going somewhere else. So to date, um, what we have done with recoveries, these numbers are gonna vary a little bit 'cause there's still some outstanding things that are working their way in. But we've had, what we've got are two different types of revenue. You'd have some situations where you'd have, what I'm calling a one-time monies, and that's a look back, meaning we could go back a year, two years, sometimes to inception on a revenue that had not been coming to you that should. And in those categories, the number you don't see here, that total was $245,796.16. A lot of those you'll see had reoccurring dollars also. But this means you're gonna continue to get it year after year after year. Uh, with the exception of hall taxes, it was being phased out. But we were able to get at least three years of corrections done to that. And for that, you're almost $50,000 reoccurring new revenue, uh, every year in your budget cycle. I, what I included in this one that I didn't include in years past or previous presentations was the expected recurrence, how many years you can count on that revenue. So I wanted to see what we were looking at for a 20-year plan. So as we looked at all of these revenue streams that have already come in and been corrected for the next 20 years, that's $800,000 new money is coming into your budget that you didn't originally have when we started this process two years ago. Now, what I wanna talk about now, and the reason I am bringing these forward, again, some of this is gonna require permission from the General Assembly or just their nod of approval, and they're in session right now. Um, and we're under some time constraints just to get them to put things in order for you guys to go forward. But before I go to that, I've got three items here that I've tagged with stars. They only have one-year recurrence or one-year life expectancy. This is something I'm gonna work with your offices. They can periodically go back and check this 'cause there may be additional years where there will be monies coming in, probably not the sum we're looking at here, but maybe. But that's not something I can guarantee you. That's just gonna depend on your bookkeeping and some things you have to do in conjunction with the state. I'm more worried with the details. I'll give them all the details. They can tell you how much each year it's gonna be. I will point out that we had a litigation tax increase of $10 in November of 2018. The numbers I'm giving you are actually collected numbers. We're not talking about billed and uncollected. And I'm pleased to say you guys have a 49% collection rate, which I know most folks would love to see something much higher than that, but I think it's a very good start for something we haven't looked at. The process is to see if there's some improvements that can be made there, and there's always room for improvement, uh, in any system. So I think that number can only go up, but you do have a 49% collection rate going on with that category right now. Now, I wanna talk to you about four things tonight. Um, I'm gonna do these out of order. What I wanna talk to you about first, 'cause it's on your agenda, is item number 11. I wasn't sure it was gonna be on there, so we might even address one of the issues tonight. It's a hotel motel tax I've called it State Park. Benton County already imposes a 5% hotel motel tax. You've been doing that since 1994. Way back then, state took a look at that. It's very well defined as to who is supposed to be included in that. Anybody that provides, uh, accommodations, whether it's a cabin, a hotel room, a campsite, an RV site. It's pretty inclusive. Well, the state said since we weren't, since the state was not specifically named in that definition, you couldn't include them. You guys have a state park, state of. Once we go in and adjust your private act, which is what we're asking permission to do tonight, and then change the definition to add the state in that, as it is done in other states, as it's done in other counties that have state parks in them, the state will then be collecting that money. Uh, I'm gonna show you how I came to this number here. It's kinda like walking down a sidewalk, looking behind you, so looking forward. All right, I'll try to. All right, let's look at this. What I did was I took the number of rooms that are available at the state park. There are various types of rooms, so their average nightly rate is different. So this is all the number of rooms, the average rate. I multiplied it out to say what would be the total revenue if for one night all those rooms were ready. So that's what that is taken out for. Then I took the 5% hotel motel fee that is to be collected, multiply that by the revenue to show what that would be, assuming a third of the year they're occupied. Now, I think that's a very low number to throw out for a state park to only have a third of the year to have occupancy, but I'd rather be conservative and you'd get a bigger number in a year when we come back and look at this. And for me to give you a big number and you have to come back and readjust budgets. So that alone, we're looking at an additional annual increase in your sales tax, $16,595.15. That's hotel motel tax, not sales tax. Uh, again, this is something that has already taken place in other counties that have a state park in them that put the definition in there properly. There was a Attorney General's opinion in 96. It just got missed by this county. It's one of the things I look for. We have to do it through the General Assembly. It'll be a private act change. You're just putting two words into your definition, adding the state of Tennessee or state agency, whatever the wording is, we've included in there, for them to start doing that. They're expecting it. It's just something that's gonna take your approval to do. So that's what that is now. Now, I'm gonna go back to these. We're also gonna, but we're gonna hold off talking about this general lit tax increase to the last. I wanna talk about these other two because they actually are already taking place, and we worked on some meetings today. Uh, mayor's office, I have to thank your mayor. He has been extremely helpful with the right goals and the right approach to making these things happen. Uh, he's, he's made staff available, all of the constitutional officers should have been very helpful. So they're on board with this, helping to make your county the best that it can be and helping you guys make your decisions easier. When we started looking at the hotel motel type, uh, state park, you currently have seven hotel motels, and that's just an all-inclusive terminology, that are registered and paying the hotel motel tax on a monthly basis or at least submitting their reports. We discovered the state park, and what it's gonna take to do that again is just to change to your, for your private act. We discovered four more hotel motels that we met, we sent information packets to. We met with two of them and received an email from the third one today. And those are processing through. The two that we met with today, the one, between the two that, that we were, uh, that had not been paying, there's $48,476 that they will be returning to the coffers within the next three to six months. Hopefully sooner than that, but that's a timeframe to give them a little chance to get caught up with all of this. In addition to that, the penalties on that for them having not paid, there's taxes, there's interest and penalty that, uh, is part of your private acts required to be applied to that. That's another $11,000. Now, that, those two numbers right there is a one-time income coming in there. However, those two hotels alone are gonna bring in another $15,000 a year. Again, I extrapolated it out, assuming that you're gonna have those two locations here for 20 years. That's $310,000 additional dollars coming into your hotel motel tax collections. That said, we had discussions going on with at least four more others, and we just identified three more that we'll be talking to, uh, within the next month. This is gonna be an ongoing process because people pop up with Airbnbs, new hotels come along, bad addresses come along. So this is gonna be something ongoing that's gonna need attention. I think we'll get the bulk of them here in the next six months identified, and then we'll set up a system to make it easier to catch them when they're coming in and getting started. But our goal right now is to catch the ones that are out there that either didn't know about this, changed hands, or fell through the cracks. So hopefully, again, in six months, we'll be able to come back with a bigger number here and more reoccurring. I know we're gonna come back with more reoccurring dollars. There's just no question about that. The ones we're not, have discussions ongoing with, it's just a matter of going through, getting the records, getting the numbers, putting it together, and filling out the reports. These can go back for three years, so it's 36 reports that have to be filled out and turned in. It's just gonna take a little bit of time, but I promise we'll stay on top of it. Now, let's talk about the general litigation tax increase. As I mentioned up earlier, in November of 2018, there was a $10 tax increase in that general litigation. And it took you, what I told you then at the time, it was true. It took you to the maximum that could be allowed for that. Now, I wanna remind everybody, your general litigation taxes or the fees that come through your court system are meant to have the court system, the judicial system pay for itself, a user fee. So you're not going to the property owners who never see the inside of the court building, never come for anything, uh, to self-fund itself. Very similar to what you do with clerk's office, with the business taxes, the DMV licenses, all of that. It's meant to have that department be self-funded or at least help them fund itself. There is a law, it's already on the books, it's there, so you're not creating a new law. You're not asking for anything different. What you have to do is, once you've reached that $60 max, if you have jail needs, courthouse needs, you can ask the General Assembly to include you, as they already have 10 other counties, in proposing and implementing this $50 additional fee. This would stay into place as long as you had an indebtedness for that. And I know that one of the things you're working on right now, uh, is on your, uh, with the jail right now. It's 3.4 million in outstanding bonds. This could go towards that. Uh, and it is simply geared for that, to help pay that off, to make the system support itself. Once that indebtedness was gone, this would go away. But by going in and asking the General Assembly to allow you to be one of those counties that can do this, it doesn't make it automatic. We ask the General Assembly to include you. It comes back to you, and when you're ready, you implement it. It's not automatic once we ask the General Assembly to do it. It's still back in your hands as when to do it. But if you wait till June and decide we want this, then you have to wait again till February when the General Assembly comes back in. So all we're doing with that one is saying, "General Assembly, please add Benton County to the section of counties that are allowed to do that because we meet the qualifications because of the needs we have with our judicial situation." So before I start talking more, I'm gonna open the floor up and see what questions you have and make sure I'm answering everything and presenting properly. Now, I'm not that good, somebody have one question.
Now, a question. Uh, when the legislature passes this, does it go into effect today, the legislature passes it? Or is it retroactive? Or when, when would the, when would the state start assessing the occupancy of that?
That would go into effect immediately. Uh, once the definition is in there, the General Assembly will word it, uh, for good public welfare requirement. So once they say that, it will go into effect, the state will start collecting it and submitting it.
Would it be, once it come back to the state, would we have to do a resolution to affect increasing the tax of the courts?
Litigation. You would have to vote on this again, once it comes back. That's why I'm saying, not vote when we do this. What I'm asking you is to give me permission or authority to present a commi, a resolution for you guys, for this body to act on next month. I'm explaining it all here, so I can be available by phone if there are more questions that come up. The mayor's office has my email address. I can address anything in between that you have that comes up before then. But in simply putting you in that legislation, you will then have the ability to implement it when you're ready.
Would this increase the $10 litigation tax fee?
Yes, this now goes, this now, this is additional $50 that goes into that category of fees. Yes, it would be an increase.
This is money that's going forward, can't go forward, it's dangerous.
Yes.
How much money are you talking about going forward?
Well, if we're looking at this staying in effect for 10 years, you're looking at, and this is just simple math. There's nothing compounded or going into an investment model. Uh, you're looking at $734,000 that would go towards indebtedness that you have.
And you mentioned some of that could be used as far as the jails.
Mm-hmm.
Does that mean additional funds will be freed up, the law according to the $734,000 goes in?
Or does it just go with our debt? Is the litigation tax, so it can be used for debt, regulations, improvements, the same as your general litigation tax can be used?
And you don't have to have existing debt for it. You can, this could be for upcoming debt, upcoming capital expense, as long as it's categorized that it's going to be for the judicial application.
It just increased the existing, what we've got.
If you currently have general tax dollars that are unallocated that you've allocated to that, then yes, this could supplement that if you wanted to.
There were three of them possibly.
Yes, if you have, yes, if you have dollars that could otherwise be allocated somewhere else. This could not be. This has to go there, but it could rearrange some if you've got some general fund monies going somewhere else.
Could this money be used for, uh, money to pay jurors and stuff?
No.
And cannot?
No. This, this has to be capital projects, uh, tangible things.
Right, okay. Go ahead.
Jurors are tangible, don't get me wrong, but we're talking buildings, assets, uh, things along that line that are long-term assets.
So it sounds like you need a motion, uh, for someone, I guess make a motion to go ahead and authorize your efforts to go ahead and draw this up into a document that we can submit to the state. Is that, is that what you're asking?
That is correct. Uh, but I, let me go, two more things, uh, and then I'll, I'll reiterate what I'm asking permission for, and then we can do, what we motion is that unless somebody wants to remove something from what I've stated. Um, as we've gone through, uh, looking at this, I know several members have expressed other, uh, issues for me to look into. The mayor has brought, do things that are outside my main scope that I start with, and that's not unusual. Every county's different, you're gonna have different issues. One of the things that kept, was a reoccurring issue that kept being brought up, was the pulpwood, uh, revenue that comes in. I looked at your private act for that, and, and you're missing an aspect of it. You don't have the capability to audit those companies with your hotel motel. I'm gonna compare it to your hotel motel. You have a private act that implemented your hotel motel tax, and in that, you have an audit capability. You can go back three years. The county can send auditors in to look at that and audit it for three years. You don't have that with pulpwood. My recommendation would, would be, it's a private act change. While the General Assembly's in session, let's go ahead and let me do another resolution that would allow for that audit capability. Again, if we wait till after the General Assembly goes out, we're gonna have to wait till next year to start that all over again. You can audit it whenever you're ready and we can process it place. But this, this puts you in line with other entities where it's a local tax, so you have that authority to go in and look at the books, request the books. Uh, right now, you don't have that authority. It would be the good graces of the companies to come in and cooperate, as I'm sure most of the companies in Benton County would be glad to cooperate. Uh, but this just gives you a little extra. So I would recommend that as first step. The state is just overrun with what they have capability to do. You're gonna go to the bottom of the list if you ask them to come in and do it, and it may be months or a year before you get to that point. Here it'd be in your hands, you could, you could implement it along with them.
Who'd be auditing in that situation?
Sorry?
Who would you audit? The landowner or the timber buyer? That's kind of got us confused. Who is responsible for?
If, if you is paying the tax on there, that is where your audit would come. Just like on the hotel motel, that's one of the things I'm gonna, that's another thing I wanna recommend, and I'll, I'll try, I'll try to tie it together. Uh, in reviewing the hotel motel, uh, uh, we discovered that there's a possibility we wanna eliminate, it's the next step in checking things. We want to do a sample audit of a couple of the ones that have already been paying to see if we're missing anything or learn anything from that and, and get the experience with auditing the local companies when it comes to a local applied tax. So when you have that audit ability, go into the payer of the tax. So if it is the company, if it is the hauler, whoever is submitting that, that's where the audit would come. Now, from that, you may be able to go back further. I'm gonna have to get with my accountant and ask that. Uh, that wasn't a service that was originally part of my contract. I need permission to make a recommendation as to how to move forward with that on the hotel motel tax.
What we're gonna have to control that is passing something that requires them to come in and pay it because right now, they're not doing it. The purchaser or the contractor themselves, they need to get away from the landowner so where the one who does the timber itself gets a requirement to it. Because right now, there's not happening. If they came in and done it, and we pass something saying it's the buyer who caused it, not the landowner. That would be something you could audit there because there's just a few timber buyers in our section. It'd be easy done. When you go to the landowners, you know, they naturally don't wanna come in and pay something. They don't, nobody else pays.
But, but without that audit capability right now, we can't identify where it needs to go. And with an audit, we can see, we just get more permission, uh, with an official audit.
I guess what I'm saying, when we do do that, this new one also directed towards the, uh, the purchasers, the timber buyer, because that eliminates the landowner's ease. It puts you down to three to four people instead of the whole county trying to audit individual landowners.
And if we have that authority, we will.
Okay.
Another question.
Yes.
On the authority to audit these timber cutters, there's a lot of them that's out of state kinda here. So what do you deal with that when they're from Mississippi or Alabama?
And that's something the county's gonna have to tell, tell us.
That's where we, I'm saying, we make a county, wholly would be a county issue. The word, when they come in this county, they got to come here before they cut timber. If they don't, that gives us the right to run charges on them or whatnot, not the landowners, but it mightn't.
And, and I'll, I'll be honest with you. You're asking questions that I don't know the answer to because we have not been able to go in and audit. That's your first step to be able to say, "Okay, this is the process, how it goes." And, and an auditor will be able to tell us that information. I don't have that to give you.
So do you have any other counties that's in this situation on this pulpwood audit?
The, the question has come up periodically, yes, and that's why.
How do they deal with?
But to be quite honest, you're the first ones that I've come to with this to change the private act and start there.
Mr. Barry.
Yes, uh, I was gonna need to amend the private act to, uh, to change this language on the pulpwood. Yes, that, okay. It'll just be adding the audit. Similar phrase we've already got in hotel motel tax is what I'm just taking ad, that, that the county has, uh, three years audit capability or something along that line. And that is not uncommon in any private act. I'm, I'm not picking on pulpwood, that just happens to be the issue du jour that has come up here from time to time. Uh, this is similar to what I'm asking you to change on, uh, the hotel motel to include the state park. Just trying to get things in there that give you the tools possibly to make sure everything is processing properly. Uh, so that, that's all you're doing is, is putting everything, putting you in line with what the state requires for you to ask and, ask and get the questions answered that you're asking for without having to rely on the state to put you somewhere in their big loop of things that may or may not ever happen. And no disrespect to the state, it just, the, the bigger you are, the more it affects the state budget. That's gonna get more attention. So the smaller you are, the, and, and quite honestly, we all like government as close as at home anyway. Y'all need to be in charge of what's going on. You need to have to be the ones that have to say that the response is coming back to, not waiting for the state to come back when you can do that. And that's what these private act changes are for. So what I propose here, and I'll take more questions, are four things. Uh, one, I'm asking you to vote for the private act tonight, the resolution of a private act to change, uh, to change the private act for hotel motel tax for the state park. State's just waiting on that. It'll go through. We have no issue, there's no issue with that at all. The other two things are, uh, for me to present back to you, for your, for your, for your vote next month, a resolution to add audit capability in your private act for your pulpwood. The, uh, resolution to the General Assembly for the $50 general lit tax inclusion for the county, not implementation of it, just the inclusion of the county. So you have that at your disposal, winning if you wanna implement it. And then a general nod, officially a resolution or not, I'll do it as accordingly, uh, for a small audit of the existing hotel motel. Implement your audit capability within the hotel motel, uh... private act that you currently have. So, those are the four things I'm asking for tonight.
I've got you on the pulpwood, and the court, and the hotel, hotel, and the other is the fourth and the fifth?
Sorry, excuse me.
The fifty-dollar?
Yes, fifty-dollar general litigation increase, including Benton County and the general law that allows for a fifty-dollar tax increase.
Pulpwood, fifty-dollar.
We're gonna vote on these separately or all at once?
All at once.
Unless somebody wants to exclude something, that will be up to y'all.
The resolution, the resolution that we have regarding the hotel motel tax, does that write in some of this language, or is that too to be adjusted? But I think our first resolution is based off of the hotel occupancy tax, we still may include that.
I think that resolution is sufficient, I've already spoken with your house and senate members, your senate members, his staff is just waiting for us to say what that wording is gonna be. I will just mirror the definition, expand the definition that Anderson County has, and ask them to take that and mirror it in the county.
I need a motion on the pulpwood, fifty-dollar court, hotel motel tax review.
I have the motion.
I'll second. A motion of Mr. Berry, a second of Mr. Victor, any discussion? No discussion? All in paper say aye.
Aye.
No notes, period, no periods.
Chairman, do we need to suspend the rules to do that?
She was only generous.
I wasn't.
No, you're just basically giving her permission to submit resolutions.
I want to make sure.
Thank you. Yeah, your vote will take place next month on each one of those. Again, I can be available by call, and any emails in the meantime. I would ask though, if you're gonna have an email, if there's gonna be multiple questions, submit them through Ashley at the mayor's office, so that I'm answering one, responding to all, and I have it do fifteen or twenty different ones. And, Mr. Chairman, unless there's a need for me to say for the resolution, I've got it listed in the line.
You've got it listed, thank you for what you're doing.
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to say thank you, you're right here, because she's just walked in here and told us it's a strong possibility, she's found three quarters of a billion dollars to be in the county for the next forty years, and I have something, thank you very much.
Actually, if you look at the long term, she's found this, possibly billions, it just depends on how long you want to stretch that window out. And I do caution the citizens that, you know, she is the, she is our auditor, she has found the loophole, she has found the missing money, that we have probably been going decades without collecting. You know, and you look around your communities, and you look around a lot of things within Benton County, we wonder why, where's the money gone, what's happened? She's helping us find the money that we probably should have been paid decades for. Now, going forward, you know, what's the possibility of going back, probably very dear. But going forward, this is gonna be a huge value, this is the difference between having a deputy, doing a jail workhouse program, or hiring the needed employee that we may possibly need, or repairing a road, who knows? But, you know, when you're talking multi-millions of millions of dollars, this is the value that the experts bring our county, okay? We're gonna have a couple more resolutions coming up, and I will expound them a little bit more, that, you know, sometimes you gotta pay money to make money, and you gotta have the proper expertise in place. We have no county codes, okay? So, when it comes to your illegal dumps, when it comes to enforcing taxes or whatever, we have no enforcement mechanism. We have to hire auditors to simply point it out to us that you're owed that money. But at the end of the day, we look around, and we don't have the enforcement arm within our county to be able to ensure people comply, and while the tax away, the mice will play, and if people have been going years and years and years possibly not paying the county what was already in place to do, we kind of invite some problems onto ourselves. So, I commend the commission for being proactive, everyone that, you know, is supportive of Ms. Berry, she's a valuable resource in this county, I'm glad we got her.
The booth is on with Mr. High-Tire?
The mayor asked me a month or so ago to prepare a Second Amendment sanctuary resolution for Benton County. And he laid out some specific goals. First and foremost, he wanted it to have some teeth to it, he wanted it to have some bite. He wanted it to be a resolution that not only this county would be proud of, but other counties may emulate. He wanted it to have the force of the words of the people of this county, and he wanted it worded strongly. And I think I've done that, I submitted this to the law enforcement committee on Monday night, I believe, and they approved it in the Senate before the full commission. And the mayor wanted me to get up and answer any questions that y'all might have. The first thing I'd like to do is, everybody here read this. And there's two resolutions, there's a resolution that was originally proposed before this one was actually completed, and so the law enforcement committee, if I'm not mistaken, said that the full, the original line replaces it. Correct, you want me to? Yes, I will read it. Twenty-twenty Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution for Benton County, State of Tennessee, sponsored by commissioners Ronnie Hopper, Norman Fraser, Galia Di, and county mayor Brett Lashley. Section one, title, the title of this resolution shall be known as the Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution, or S A S R. Section two, findings. The people of Benton County, Tennessee, find and declare, the people's rights are endowed by our Creator and are enumerated in the Bill of Rights. Whereas, acting through the United States Constitution, the people created government to be their agent in the exercise of a few divine powers, while reserving to the citizens the right to decide on matters which concern their lives, liberty, and property in the ordinary course of affairs. And whereas, the Second Amendment to the Constitution of the United States of America states, a well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. And whereas, the right of the people to keep and bear arms is further protected from infringement by state and local governments under the Ninth, Tenth, and Fourteenth Amendments to the Constitution of the United States of America. And whereas, the Supreme Court of the United States of America in District of Columbia versus Heller recognized the individual's right to keep and bear arms as protected by the Constitution of the United States of America. Justice Antonin Scalia prevailing opinion in that case stated, the Second Amendment protects an individual's right to possess a firearm unconnected with service in a militia, and the right to use that firearm for traditionally lawful purposes such as self-defense within the home. And whereas, Section one of the Fourteenth Amendment to the Constitution of the United States of America states, no doubt state shall make or enforce any law which shall enbridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws. And, whereas, the Supreme Court of the United States recognized in McDonald versus City of Chicago that the Second Amendment to the Constitution of the United States was incorporated by the Fourteenth Amendment and thereby made applicable to the states. Therefore, the right to keep and bear arms is a fundamental individual right, shall not be infringed, and local and state federal acts, laws, orders, rules, or regulations regarding firearms, firearms accessories, and ammunition are a violation of the Second Amendment to the Constitution of the United States. Local governments have the legal authority and moral obligation to refuse to cooperate with state and federal firearms laws that violate those rights, and to proclaim a Second Amendment sanctuary for law-abiding citizens in their cities and counties. Therefore, through the enactment of this document, Benton County, Tennessee, is hereby a Second Amendment Sanctuary county. Section three, prohibitions. Nonwithstanding any law, regulation, rule, or order to the contrary, no agent, department, employee, or official of Benton County, Tennessee, a political subdivision of the State of Tennessee, while acting in their official capacity, shall number one, knowingly and willingly participate in any way in the enforcement of any unconstitutional or unlawful act as defined herein regarding personal firearms, firearms accessories, or ammunition. Number two, utilize any assets, funds, or funds allocated by any entity to Benton County, Tennessee, in whole or in part to engage in any activity that aids in the enforcement of investigation relating to an unlawful act in connection with personal firearms, firearms accessories, or ammunition. Section three, unlawful acts. An unlawful act shall consist of any federal or state act, law, order, rule, or regulation which restricts an individual's constitutional right to keep and bear arms, including any federal or state act, law, order, rule, or regulation which bans or effectively bans, registers or effectively registers, or limits the lawful use of firearms, firearms accessories, or ammunition. Any such unlawful act is invalid in Benton County, Tennessee, and shall not be recognized by Benton County, Tennessee, and is specifically rejected by the citizens of Benton County, Tennessee, and shall be considered null and void and of no effect in Benton County, Tennessee, and this includes, but shall not be limited to the following. Any tax, levy, fee, or stamp imposed on firearms, firearms accessories, or ammunition not common to all other goods or services on the purchase or ownership of those items by citizen. Any registration or tracking of firearms, firearms accessories, or ammunition. Any registration or tracking of owners of firearms, firearms accessories, or ammunition. Any act forbidding the possession, ownership, or use or transfer of any firearm, firearm accessory, or ammunition by citizens of the legal age of eighteen or over other than pursuant to federal law background check requirements for transfers or purchases through FFL dealers. Any act, red flag laws, or other laws that bypass due process by ordering the confiscation of firearms, firearms accessories, or ammunition from citizens. Any prohibition, regulation, or use restriction related to ownership of the constitutionally guaranteed lawful use or carry of firearms. And any prohibition, regulation, or use restricted, limiting hand grips, stocks, flash suppressors, bayonet mounts, magazine capacity, clip capacity, internal capacity, sound suppressor, or any unnamed firearm accessories or types of ammunition that are currently available for sale, possession, or use by citizens. Section four, severability. The provisions of this act are hereby declared to be separable. And in any provision of the act or the application of such provisions to any person or circumstance is declared invalid for any reason, such declaration shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this act. The rest of it's in the history. I hope that I met your mandate, Mr. Mayor. And if there's any questions on this document, I'd be happy to answer any other questions. Okay, thank you.
It's not a question, but I really wish that your name would be on it.
Just so it gets passed, that's all I, that's all I.
Yeah, it's a nominal drop.
What I would like, is I would like every commissioner to have the opportunity to sign on as a supporter of this.
Quick pause, supervisor, Kova, Kova?
Koby. Koby.
Yes, sir. Come on.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight. I really just wanted to approach this group to try to clear up some questions that were brought forward last month about our severance taxes that Koby provides to Benton County and Carroll County, because we have two active mines that operate in this area. Now, as what we mine here in Benton, Benton County and Carroll County, Tennessee, the tonnages are around about five hundred thousand tons a year that are sold tons. A good portion of those tons do go out of state. And based on the form that's developed by the State of Tennessee, I have a, I have the form here if you would like me to share it with you, but it says that those tons are exempt. And, now, as I mentioned that, what tons are mined in Benton and Carroll County, Tennessee, over eighty percent of those tons come from Carroll County. And I'm sorry about that, but that's just how our reserves are. And it just so happens that what sands, what tons are sold from Benton County, almost all of it goes out of state. I did wanna make one clarification, though, on the mine that's in Carroll County, we're getting real close across the Benton County. Now, we, those dollars that are given to Carroll County right now will shortly be given to Benton County, and every single dollar, two thousand dollars a month.
Thank you. I think a lot has been discussed with attorney, and we know that the last, maybe you had with the legislature meeting, if the mayor, if we're gonna understand a lot of shit, so.
Okay. It's not like we're trying to hide anything or anything at all, we wanna be good.
Just a question, you got any question that might pass by me, sir, you're in the name of the.
Did I, yes, Norman Fraser, third district. Did I understand y'all looking at expanding some footprint here in our county, maybe some access?
There's an access road, we're looking to, we talked to the road commission this month about closing off a section of Sand Mill Road temporarily, and then we will put it back based on an agreement we make with the county here. And we're drafting a contract or memorandum of understanding for the road commission to review and see if it's acceptable to bring forward to you this body here.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Absolutely.
I have a question, sir.
Sure.
The taxes you pay, do you pay those to Carroll County, or do you pay them to the state, and the state gives the money to Carroll County?
Okay, for the state, qualify as Benton County as a warrant county, and so those monies are paid directly to the state. Carroll County's not a warrant county, and I don't know whether it is, and so those monies are paid directly to Carroll County.
Other question, the, for clarification.
Yes.
The sand that's being mined now.
Yes.
In Benton County is shown as exempt.
Yes, sir. We have one customer in Memphis, Tennessee, right now.
So, what's the difference between that sand in Benton County and the one over there on your Carroll County line, that you're stating that that particular sand we are probably going to receive some income from?
Well, our mine, the minerals that we're mining is a lens deposit, and we're mining over an eight-mile area. If you look at that geology of the minerals here, you'll see a lens that our core sand is on top of a transition zone and then fine sand, that's over in Carroll County. Over here, in Benton County, some reason that core sand's not here, it's all fine. And the customers that rely on this type of product is used for pharmaceutical glasses or backdusting for rip shavings. So, that's just, it's just the market that sand's going into.
And will the relocation of the road later on, technically, though, that sand is still gonna be exempt sand in the end, right?
Technically, yes.
How many employees do you have just?
We have thirty employees right now. And we also spend a lot of money inside Benton County for local establishments around here. So, we try to generate a lot of revenue, we'll try to keep money within this county.
Thank you, I know we have a bunch of all players, and many sales proposals, and whatnot. I mentioned you, you'll be seeing if I can help out these kids.
Anytime, if anybody needs some help, you know, we found out this past year Head Start wasn't gonna get anything for the kids for Christmas. Not that I'm bragging about what we did, but we helped them out.
Well, that's what I'm out in the county talking about, thank you for being that hard. Thank you for being that hard.
Just to clarify for the citizens, talking about the road relocation, this is a perfect opportunity that your county commission has been engaged about trying, they see a hindrance here for you. So the more, if we can do something on a good private public partnership, it sets you up for success.
Yep.
You know, thirty employees, employee, payroll, and things like that. So I'm glad to see the county commission begin accepting discussion on that and looking for ways to win win outcomes.
And not to brag about our company, but we pay our employees very well. Our employees are our greatest assets, and so it's probably some of the top salaries in this area.
How many of them that's retired, that they've been there a long time?
Yes, they have. I've got guys that have been there forty-three years.
And they still be healthy. That's a good thing.
Absolutely. We try, that's safety number one up there.
We started, you had to come on the terms that you need, was a thought, but I'm just glad you have, because it only bought you back. Again, sometimes it's good, but it's good to everybody to know what we've done in Benton County.
Absolutely. And if any of you commissioners want to come and see what we do, I'd be glad to share what we do at Kova, because I'm very proud of what we do here.
Thank you, Paul. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Father.
The latest, Swift, Flimper.
I had a big long speech made up, but as y'all can tell by their applause a little ago, Mr. Hightire did a fantastic job on this resolution. We have collected over five hundred signatures that support this resolution. There's only one spot that I would like to make an adjustment to. Where in section three, under the unlawful acts, it says an unlawful act shall consist of any federal or state act, law, or rule, or regulation which restricts an individual's constitutional right. I would like for it to say which restricts or violates anyone's constitutional right. Would you get that put in there? Just about everybody in this room, and I'd like to see y'all's hand. Who owns a gun? Who hunts? Who is true blue American and believes in our Constitution? This world today that we live in, they are nitpicking at our Constitution, at our freedom of speech, now our gun rights. And if we sit and say nothing, or don't stand up, this world's going to hell in a handbasket.
I'd like to have enough guns in my house to probably support half his size.
Exactly.
I'm a hunter. I'm sure you do now. We're going to be here for a second minute, if we can.
Right.
We all.
I'm a hunter. Beverly? No. Fuzzy near, Lauren? Any of them can pay you. I'm an avid hunter. I mean, you can tell from my Facebook posts, I'm an avid hunter.
I'd like y'all to hear this. We love to see this. Just turn after we've got here, I wish you could come every month, because you learn what's actually going on taking place. Not if any of you look out here and see the chairs on tour, which I see. And thank y'all for being a part of it, because our actions are, we're trying to do everything within your pocket, because you are the ones that we represent.
Right.
And that's why we make sure we go to Washington.
I seen the first one and everything, and you know, it was very sketchy. That's why I commend Mr. Hightire on the one that he did right up. It is very, very good. And it covers just about everything, plus the red flag law. The red flag law is nothing but a backdoor confiscation law, and it goes against, you know, our Constitution, our Constitution.
I'm a stickler for history, and making sure that people are recorded in history. I don't know if you want to allow us those signatures so that we can put them in the historical record?
This, this is real. And we need no door-to-door, you know? If I went door-to-door, it'd be a way more than this right here, because you can guarantee Benton County is not counting the young ones, but seventy-five percent of the population owns a gun in this town. You know, and it's not only for hunting, but it's for protection too. You know, I work evenings. My husband's out of town a lot. I come in at midnight, I like to feel safe. You know, somebody's going to be in my home, they're going to be a fool. You know, it's just all there is to it.
I'd like to think that without the Second Amendment, all those other amendments are noted.
Right.
The Second Amendment is what protects all of the other amendments.
Exactly. Without the Second Amendment, we cannot stand up to the higher veterans that want to take you down, or want to demolish the Constitution right. And it's, exactly, the red flag, and that's one of it.
Can I say something more about the red flag law?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. I specifically put that in there and named the red flag law, because first of all, and the way I put it was that the red flag laws that they're currently trying to pass in our state senate doesn't offer any due process. Now look, if I get dementia, somebody needs to take my guns. I have no problem with that. The problem I have is I want the sheriff to come to me and say, there's been a complaint, and we need to go before the judge, and you get to talk to the judge and give him your opinion, and then that person gets to talk to the judge, and then the judge will decide. And if they get my doctor and I do have dementia, I expect you to take my guns. That gives me due process. Due process is the key here. The problem is these laws don't offer due process. They mandate the sheriff can arrive and take somebody's guns, which by the way, the sheriff will not do. But I just wanted to add that about the red flag law, and saying, one other thing I wanted to say is it's a senator from Memphis that has pushed forward this new red flag.
Sarah Collins.
Right, right. And the problem is, I've said to several people, it's never going to get out of the senate, and people say, well, you never can tell. Well, we have thirty-three senators in the state of Tennessee. Twenty-eight of them are Republicans. There's only five Democrats in the state senate. So I don't think the red flag law's going to get out of this senate, but there will be other senates.
And not only that, I argued with the man. He said, oh, this won't never pass. Tennessee is a Republican state. It is today.
It is today.
What about fifteen years from now? The way this world's going, you can never tell. And then I think on this other resolution that we're all here for, on the refugees, I don't want my hard-earned tax dollars going keeping refugees up. You know, Benton County is small. We don't have a lot of industry here, you know? Lots of people work minimum wage jobs. I'm lucky I got a good job. But still, I don't want my money going and keeping somebody else up, especially when they're, you know, they're not even from here. You know, we have enough on welfare as it is. Granted, years ago, I got good sense when me and my husband went through a divorce. I lived on welfare for about five months, till I went to work for the government. I grew myself off of it. But yes, there's people out here that make a living on that, and our dollars go and have to support them. I sure don't want to be supporting anybody else.
Do you mind stating the change that you wanted again in the...
On section three, under the unlawful acts, where it says the rule or regulation which restricts, we would like to insert or violates any individual's constitutional right.
Restrict or violates.
Which restricts or violates.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bonnie, I'm here. A lot of good are here, a lot of good sports. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Bonnie Evans. I live in the 1st district. I come here tonight as your veteran service officer, and I'd just like to tell you a story about the kind of community that we live in. Three weeks ago, I received a phone call about an elderly woman, I mean, an elderly veteran and his wife who needed help. They had totaled their car in a single vehicle crash in aisle forty at exit one forty-three. Now, as I tell this story, you're going to find a lot of things that don't make sense, like they got into an accident in aisle forty-three, how did they end up here? And I think there was some devalued information, and maybe you'll see the same thing as you go through the stories. I'd been told that the ambulance was returning from transporting to Nashville, and they offered, they offered to take the call on their way home. They were transported to Camden Hospital and treated for their injury. Camden Hospital reached out to their family, who live in California, who did not want to get involved. The hospital contacted the military alliance and arranged for them to be put up to the night at Best Restaurant. When I arrived, I found Bob and Carol enjoying the restaurant at Best Restaurant. He, according to our veteran, is eighty-three, a car accident patient. Couldn't walk without assistance, and his walker was in the crashed car. She is eighty-five with Alzheimer's. She had a black eye and bruised eyeballs. She had lacerations on both sides of her head, which were sutured at the hospital. Additionally, Bob had no shoes, and Carol had no curling bone clothing. Neither of them had their medications. I learned that they were in the process of moving from Reno, Nevada to Jackson, Florida, but at this point, they were homeless and had no money. The night of their accident, they had actually slept in the woods, and when they woke up, they went to get out on exit one forty-three to go to the restaurant where they went off the investment of the exit rent. They were homeless and had no money. It was eager to be waiting for his check from the VA, which was supposed to be deposited to their account on the thirty-first of January. In spite of all this that was going on with them, their biggest concern was the missing cat, Albert, who was with them during the crash. So I left them there, and I went to, first I went to the Hope Street store, who gave me clothing for Carol and shoes for Bob. Onto the courthouse, I borrowed the wheelchair that was in the lobby. And I'd taken the things back from the hotel and given them settled back into the room. Bob gave me the crash report to go find Albert. I went to the tow truck place off of this at one forty-three, and finally in the lot where they kept the crashed vehicles. The owner of the tow truck place helped me to get Bob's walker, clean plastic cars, along with their medications and anything else I found that I thought they may be able to use. We looked for Albert without success. I was able to find his little feed dishes, so I had them with me too. I then went to the hospital to try to get contact information for the next victim. Contact was established, which affirmed that the family did not want any further involvement. The second morning with Bob and Carol started with a homeless veteran waiting for me at my office when I came in. He had spent the night in a laundromat. One of our law enforcement officers gave him a sandwich, showed him my office, and told him I would be there at eight. He had no ID, no money, and had been thrown off a Greyhound bus on the way to Texas. I don't know how this time of year, but they did. I got a ID, talked to Navy Federal Credit Union to release a bit of money early, and Jill Parsons from the Disabled Veterans Veterans Group in Camden came and drove him back to Jacksonville to get on the bus after Bob and Carol. The initial goal was just to get them to the thirty-first, when he would receive his VA check. The American Legion stepped up to pay for another night at the hotel. The VFW stepped up to pay for another night at the hotel. The Patterson Health Services Institute for the First Baptist Church stepped up. His plan was to continue on to Jacksonville to an apartment he said had been arranged. As it turned out, there was no arrangement for the apartment in Jacksonville. Friday came when there was no VA check deposited to his account. He banked at Wells Fargo, the closest Wells Fargo is in Nashville, so I drove him to Nashville, and I didn't know what happened to his check, but gave him a temporary debit card. He now had sixty-two dollars. On the following Tuesday, I called the VA, contacted the VA, and found out that he didn't get a VA check this month, and he won't get another one, and that he owes the VA now seventy-three thousand dollars, because he didn't recertify what they sent him to pay for. Tony and Lee Frye, owners of Sportsman's Rest, agreed to take the rent at a very discounted rate of thirty-five dollars per night. They ended up, they only charged us twenty-five dollars a night, and are very grateful, because they picked up before I left off. Tommy Matta and the Elks Club stepped up and offered to pay for a week or so at the Sportsman's Rest. Additionally, someone had contacted the Unforgotten Initiative, twenty-one veterans from High Ridge Spring Hill, who took up a collection and delivered it to Tommy and the Elks Club to pass out community care for the couple. While all of this was going on, Camden Chronicle, Pamela Mirabella, and the citizens of Camden were doing the I Love Camden campaigns. And I just thought, how really, as that campaign was going on, so many people in our community were showing how they love the people of Camden, and even the strangers who show up here. So I would just like to publicly thank the following people: the staff at Camden General Hospital, the owners of the staff at Best Restaurants, the Camden Hope Street store, Camden American Legion, Camden VFW, Harvey Mallach of the Elks Club, Tony and Lee Frye, Brian and the Rescinded Sportsman's Rest, Doc and the Institute, twenty-one of the Fat and Veterans Club, Hopkins Apothecary, who tried to get Carol's medication from CBS in Reno. People offered to drive to Jacksonville and a million other things for them. So I'd like to remind you, Hebrews thirteen to you, do not forget to entertain strangers, for by assuming doing so, some have unwittingly entertained angels. Thank you to all of the community for being a community care.
So that known Miss Evans, she is our veteran service officer in our county veterans office, and she has new to the job, been on it a year and a half, and she has a service heart, and the last thing you want to do when a veteran's standing before you is to try to help. And she, I think we have the best veteran service officer in the state of Tennessee. My hat is off to you. This county has one, we're in the top three, it's her capital of veterans population in the state of Tennessee, so it tells you about the demand that's placed on her office. I commend the county commission for upping her budget last year to allow her to be boots on the ground four to four and a half days a week, as opposed to two and a half days. Imagine if they had shown up one day and you were closed. You see, so that's the difference between serving the community and not serving the community. And setting up, believe the veterans contribute up to twenty-three million dollars stimulus into this money into our economy a year. So if you don't think veterans are important for our economy, we also owe it to them to be able to service them to the best of our ability from the county, so thank you, Bonnie, for all of your... And I'd like to also thank the mayor, Miss Bonnie, and the...
And I'd like to also thank the mayor, Miss Bonnie, and the local national lobby in the state, the big house. This is all he had to do a lot of work to do that and support to try and get money for this. I'd like him to progress out of the park, I feel, the state. The government should share more money for the cause that we're doing for this. Thank you, Bonnie. Good stuff. Mr. Earl Hoplin.
Nevermind.
Nevermind. Joshua Westfall.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, and citizens of Benton County. My name is Joshua Westfall. I'm a citizen of Benton County, and I live in the second district. I see on the agenda tonight there is a resolution to proclaim Benton County a Second Amendment county. On the twenty-first of January, a citizen asked for a resolution to be introduced, making Benton County a Second Amendment sanctuary county. Towards the conclusion of the county commissioners meeting, the mayor stated, "A resolution would do nothing more than state our concerns to the state of Tennessee." The mayor is correct. A resolution is nothing more than a firm decision to do or not do something similar to my New Year's resolution of losing weight. That is why I stand here before you today with a Second Amendment sanctuary ordinance. The ordinance would make Benton County one of the first counties in Tennessee to become a Second Amendment sanctuary county. A Second Amendment sanctuary resolution is great first step, but what we truly need is an ordinance. The Declaration of Independence states that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. But further, more states that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. The Tenth Amendment of the Bill of Rights states that powers not delegated to the United States by the Constitution, nor prohibited by, to the states, are reserved to the state of sovereignty or to the people. To the people is an important statement to be placed in the Tenth Amendment. If we, the people, are to be free and not subjects to our government, we, the people, must demand change or enact change. The Declaration of Independence states further that, "Whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it." If our government at any level are no longer acting in accordance with the Constitution, it is time we alter or abolish it. I had that conversation with individuals about protecting our Second Amendment rights in Tennessee. The response from most of those individuals is that Tennessee would never take away our gun rights. Ten years ago, five years ago, maybe even a year ago, I would have agreed. However, Tennessee House Bill eighteen seventy-three was introduced, which would allow the court to issue an emergency protection order upon a finding that a person possesses imminent risk of harm to the person or others if allowed purchase or possess a firearm, authorize a family member, housing member, intimate partner, or law enforcement officer petition for such an order. Tennessee Senate Bill eighteen oh seven is the exact same bill introduced in the House. Bills such as these are just the beginning of anti-gun legislation that we will see come before the Tennessee House and Senate. House Bill eighteen seventy-three and Senate Bill eighteen oh seven are red flag laws used to take guns away from people. The bill is introduced when the gate here, your right, under the Fourth Amendment of the Bill of Rights. The Fourth Amendment prohibits unreasonable search and seizure. It requires any search warrant to be judicially sanctioned and supported by probable cause. If you have committed no crime, there is no evidence a crime has been committed or that there is no evidence a crime is in progress. Your property cannot be seized, and law enforcement cannot search your property. The Second Amendment is clear. A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms, shall not be infringed. However, let me explain some key words. Militia: all able-bodied civilians eligible by law for military service. Security: the state of being free from danger or threat. Right: as a result of having a moral or legal claim or entitlement. Keep: have or entanglement possession of. Bear: carry. Arms: weapon and ammunition, armors. Shout: shout is a word of command and one which has always worked, which must be given a compulsory meaning as noted obligation. It has a peremptory meaning, and it is imperative or mandatory, infringed, to encroach upon in a way that violates or the rights of another. We did not gain our freedom from the town by signing the Declaration of Independence. We gained our freedom by fighting for it with guns, by shooting those who opposed our freedom in the face.
That's right.
I too have fought in war in both Afghanistan and Iraq. Fighting to free the oppressed in foreign countries to then come back and see my own government trying to turn us into the oppressed. On March tenth, now this is important for all your Second Amendment, on March tenth at the state capitol in Nashville, there will be a rally on the steps of the capitol. This is not a rally to say, "I will not comply," or "Don't tread on me." Although great mantras, this rally is about taking action now. Why is it important that an ordinance be passed in Benton County? First, to make a stand against any law or act that infringes on any of our rights given to us by our society. Second, to enact an ordinance that would prohibit any funds be used if the state enacted bills... Excuse me. If the state enacted such bills or future bills as I spoke about tonight. Similar to Mr. Hightower, I have drafted a Second Amendment sanctuary ordinance, which I have with me with the help of Gun Owners of America. I will be happy to provide a copy for review to the district commissioner, mayor, whoever would like it. I have one copy of it. Or I could email any of you a copy. I would also like to thank you for your time allotted to me by the commissioners, the chairman, and the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kenneth Talkley. Captain. You've been called Talkley? Back to that?
Not in a long time. What I would like to talk about tonight, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, is item number fifteen on the agenda. It's Resolution Zero Five. I have seen the same type of thing introduced twice in my lifetime. And not to a good end in either one. The first time was in St. John's County in Florida. St. John's County was a very rural county. Maybe I should start by reading this resolution. Where the people behind me know what we're talking about. Resolution establishing a solid waste department and appointing a director to run and oversee the department to perform all non-planning services relating to garbage collection and solid waste management, in which the county provides. Now, in St. John's, it was a very rural county, except for St. Augustine. St. Augustine, the county commissioner kind of let it go, let it do its own thing. But they come up with the thing of, we have got to start a garbage service. We're having illegal dumping. So we've got to get a garbage service going. It happened that my brother at the time had a garbage service down there. He was providing basically the western part of the county. But he started out like a lot of them did, like I see around here with pickup trucks with plywood trucks on it. By this time, he'd had four garbage trucks, regular trucks, and one of the lift trucks that lifts up the containers. Not the big containers, the small ones that dump. Well, the county commission, which we didn't have any county mayors in Florida, we just had the commissions. The county commission decided that that wasn't good enough, that they hadn't put it into the tax base, so everybody had to get garbage service. Well, needless to say, the taxes went up. The small people like my brother were pushed out of business. BFI, Brown and Ferris Industries came in. They set up, and the taxes started going up. Now, from that point, I don't know exactly what happened in St. John's. I lived in Putnam County. Putnam County was a very, very rural county, even more so than Benton is. And what happened there was, they were going to stop illegal dumping, so they had to form a committee for solid waste and put somebody in charge of it. Then they took the people, and they said, "We've got to have people to go out to these dump sites, go through the garbage, find out who's dumping, and we're going to hold them responsible." Well, they found out they couldn't do it unless they saw a dump. So the next thing was, they had to go and start taxing, adding to the property tax for garbage service, and start a garbage service. My property was settled late. We had a bucket mill in the county, and they paid the majority of the taxes. My taxes were eighty-five dollars a year. When they started the garbage service, it automatically went up a hundred and fifty dollars right then. This was back in the early eighties. So what's it going to go up now if we do something like that? But not only that, after BFI came in again, there was unintended consequences. The road that we lived on was a private road maintained by the fifteen or so people that lived there. They would not collect garbage on our road because if the garbage trucks destroyed it, they would be held liable. So we had to take our containers out to a paved road or a pickup. You could only use those type containers. If you lost one, you were charged for it. It wasn't anything for somebody to steal your container if they lost theirs or something happened there since it was not around your house. You know, we're looking at now then, normal would be about twice a week for garbage pickup. And I know, I don't think there's anybody in here that would say that twenty-five dollars a month, you know, that would be great for twice a week garbage pickup, right? I'd just put three hundred dollars a year on the tax bill. Now, are our commissioners going to sit in here and add three hundred dollars to the people's tax bills in this county when they can't hardly afford to pay what they've got now? And maybe beyond that. Then you've got the same thing to happen to us in Putnam County. As soon as they started, then the county commissioner said, "These garbage trucks are tearing up our secondary roads. We've got to go up on the taxes to be able to pay for the roads." So there went the taxes again. That's about the time I moved. So please, people, think about what you're doing. Think about what you are going to add. And it all starts right here with this amendment. I have seen it twice. The county commissioners told us, "Oh, no, 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 no. We just need to stop the illegal dumping." That's what we climbed up to. Please, think about what you're doing. Thank you.
What year did you move in?
I moved here six years ago.
Okay. I'll go ahead and address this now so that the mayor's form, because I think time is of the essence. But prior to you moving here, we had a landfill. Now we have the largest landfill in the state of Tennessee. Prior to you moving here, we had something that started off as a tire recycling shipping plant that became an illegal dump known as ZWS. Those two entities came about because we did not have a solid waste department in place to be our boots on the ground, to be our monitors and enforcers, to ensure that those particular dumps do not get out of hand. Now, the old saying, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." I wholeheartedly support the creation of a solid waste department. Now, how we implement it and how we form it over time, we will gradually move into. But one complaint that I hear is of the constant, 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 trash on the road, trash in the woods, trash in the creeks, trash in the ravines. Those things do not clean up themselves. Those things prevent people from moving to this county that we need to be our future school students, to be future taxpayers and producers. So I endorse this one hundred and ten percent. Now, it's not that to stop it, it's simply our mechanism to begin implementing smart practices, practices that we did not have in place. Prior to these two big megadots coming into play. And you talk, you highlight a lot of the negatives. None of those negatives are applied, okay? Now, secondly, does, what's the cost of not having it? Someone from Big Sandy, north of Big Sandy, driving thirty-five miles round trip to drop off trash? Because there's a cost in that. There's gas, there's time, there's wear and tear on cars. So whatever fee would be imposed, and I'm here to say there would never be a fee that I know of. But whatever fee would be imposed, you've got to wait. Is that cost worth it? Next, secondly, we cannot get a convenience center in this county in the north and southern counties, which we are trying diligently to establish, until we have a solid waste department. Because a solid waste department allows us to apply for the convenience grants to be able to build the convenience centers at no cost to the taxpayer. I think it's important to have that entity in place and implemented. Right now, I'm your solid waste director. And I don't need to be running around the county. You don't need, your county mayor is kind, does not serve its citizens best, when I'm out there with boots running around the woods. Which, and again, I'm just going to get our lawyer here to write up summons to take it to court, which is a cost. To try to get, we still got to hire someone to go and clean it up, which is a cost, which we may not get a return to the taxpayer for twenty, thirty, forty years when these particular properties ever get foreclosed on or sold. So I think it's cost-effective to have something like this in place because all I know is we haven't had it in place. And look at the conditions of the county. We're going to do it smart. We're going to do it for the renegotiation of our contract with waste management. It's not going to cost each taxpayer one dollar more in today's budget than it will tomorrow when we properly have the funding made.
And this is exactly the same thing we heard from the county commissioners in Putnam County.
Well, if your concern is noted, it's good to have it on record. Your concern is noted, but we have thought this out very thoroughly, and we're going to implement it very thoroughly, should the commission decide to create one. But I know that if this commission votes this down, I don't want to hear another complaint about trash in this county. Mr. Buck Carter, would you like to, sorry, can I hold you just a little? Somebody's got issues out there?
I'm going to be pretty quick. First thing I'd like to do, I'd like to thank each and every one of the bottom of my heart and my family from our loss last week. And thank you for your thoughts and your prayers and your support. And I was up here last month, and the greatest you get out of about us making moving out of the hole and getting out of the flood zone down there. And the, I mean, the phrase that came in, came out of a bit cheaper than what we had anticipated. And we kind of made a deal with him. We're going to retain some of the equipment out there. Had a small additional charge, but we negotiated all that out. Some of the things need to stay there. It would cost us ten times more to put it back than if he... It would cost us ten times more to put it back than if he took it away. So uh, I'll be back up here next month with a resolution to get you guys to get your blessed on this. And uh, he came in, I think our total, what we need to go is save you three hundred, twelve thousand dollars, twelve thousand five hundred, which was fourteen acres and nice building, nice place we could do some work. And uh, I just, I just, I'm really, I'm excited about it. And uh, it's been needed for a long time, I think. The good thing about it is, we have got the money to pay for it. It's not gonna cost the county one penny. We, we've saved money and got money for building bridges and things we have to pay for upfront. We're getting reimbursed some of it, we got that money to pay for it. So we're gonna turn it right into some assets for the county. And uh, the other thing I got to say is, we, we, you all are aware that we were declared a disaster in August, in the October twenty-sixth storm. I talked to the mayor today. He sent some folks down to my office and they're gonna try to help us. We don't need any help. All our paperwork has been submitted. King was came, we've talked with him, everything's done. And uh, we, we looked it up today and since uh, my administrative assistant has been there for several years, I'm not gonna embarrass her, but she's been there a long time. She's been through ten disasters, I've been through seven myself since I've been out. And we've had zero problems with FEMA. We can negotiate our own thing. I mean, some of them might not come, but we really do. She is really good. If it wasn't for her, I don't know what we would do because she has, she has retrieved us probably over a million dollars in the past six or seven disasters that we've had here in this county. And uh, of course, now we don't get the whole amount back, we get back everything minus twelve and a half percent. We have to put that bill ourselves, but we get the biggest part of that. So my hat's off to her. And uh, I, I just wanna be on there because I'm against anyone coming in here as a consultant and taking our money out of here. We need to keep our money here as long as we can do it. And reckon I discussed that today. And uh, I think we're okay. Thank y'all very much.
Uh, again, it's better to address this now rather than the mayor's forum, but uh, we saw what the value of having a consultant does for you when they put it up on the screen here earlier, okay? We're looking at two point six million dollars of money that we didn't have yesterday. That's gonna be coming into the county because we went after the experts. Now I commend Buck Carter and his office for filing for FEMA budgets, but I'm gonna say, well, where's the sheriffs? Where's our other departments? We have probably missed out on hundreds of thousands of dollars over this, he's had seven disasters, he said. But he only filed for the highway department for, for primarily. So the role of our EMA director is to be the main coordinator in times of disaster, to be able to do our footwork, to be able to get, I want someone who's greedy. I want a consultant that wants all the damn money they could possibly make us. Because that is the difference, again, between hiring additional deputies, additional teachers, getting our roads repaired. And I contend that by going to the experts, we'll go and find more money that, that his department gets. I met with two FEMA officials in our office today and she's wondering why did the mayor not file? All of this pop flows through the mayor's office. We need one adaptation to FEMA that encompasses all these departments. Instead, we've got every department flying up on their own, doing their own thing. Now, I commend Buck Carter because he's the only one who has done that. But part of my job is to get us to act like the county that we should be acting like and that we haven't acted like in the past decades. I'm wholeheartedly endorsing that we go after the FEMA consultant, the expert, the ones that do this every day, that do it in multiple counties, multiple states, they know it better than we do. And at the end of the day, they bring home the bacon. Because that's what we're concerned about, is that there's money out there that we're missing, that we don't have the proper expertise. And just like that, Miss Barrett here for our revenue, the same applies with our county engineer, the same applies for a FEMA representative for Benton County. We need the proper expertise on the ground to represent our, our, our interest in the long term. Because we're planning for that next tornado, we're planning for that, for that next earthquake. And honestly, like I said with the solid waste director, I don't want anyone running around in woods and run around dapping the inflammation. We don't have the time to do that, we're not a large enough county to have departments and departments and departments that specialize in the issue. We need the experts. I proposed getting the expert. Chairman Plante sat in the meeting today and already they have found multiple things that we can add on to our application that wasn't submitted by the highway department. So they're gonna ask for assist the highway department in the long run. But that's going forward. We can't, we can't change the past. The last disaster, the last disaster, this is to set us up for the next one and that we do it properly.
Phil, fifth district, I'm going to have to respectfully disagree with you, Mr. Mayor. We have the expert who is sitting in Buck Carter's office. We do not need to take seventeen thousand of the twenty-two people we recruit and pay it to a consultant. Now, I did file today, all I got to do was call Buck's office and say, please show me how to do this. I called the nice lady at FEMA, she helped me with the rest. That's nothing that any of our departments can't do. And this contract you want to sign us for a two-year period, that's a huge commitment and a lot of money. I don't think we can afford to give that much out of what we're gonna recruit from FEMA to a consultant for something his office has been doing and will be happy to show any office how to do.
Well, the contract, they read the contract, they understood the contract. They can be paid no more than seventeen thousand five hundred dollars over that two-year period. They cannot collect one dime without us collecting money. So they pay for themselves, again, the re, we're paying this Barrett. Out of that two point six million dollars that she may be bringing into this county, we're probably by the end of the year pay her a hundred thousand dollars. And she has gone after her. So why is her case any different than a FEMA representative for the county? They earn their money, that's why we do it, to have manpower, which if, if, if Teresa with the highway department is that good, I would love for her to consider being our next EMA director. Because that is what we need, is someone to facilitate this for us. But at the end of the day, they still have to make this available. And, and we, and we are dependent upon EMA directors that maybe retired, doesn't know the computer, they can't do the digital part. So, so technically, a consultant takes that off our hands and they usually, how I found in every case, pay for themselves ten fold. So seventeen thousand five hundred dollars over a two-year period of time. And that's only if they collect enough money that their commission even hits that. That's the max they can be paid out to possibly give us hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I sat in with the mayor during the conversation with this lady and I promise you, if you took what you've got right there and come to her office, say now, you're gonna see that you miss probably a fourth of what you've got that's skewed you, is things that you don't reach your mind that you'd wanna buy for. That, that she's in and she's been doing it day in, day out and there's things that we don't think about.
Well, she went into Buck Carter's office, there was not one thing she could show his office that they had not already done. And they told me-
A lot of them had been having a go on it, she told you, they just later so. And what she-
The difference between what, and I'm gonna say her name wrong, the Bartlett group brought and what you're talking about here is Ms. Bartlett brought something we couldn't do ourselves. We had no idea how to go after those revenues, how to work that system. I think that the money spent on that consultant with a little inner office cooperation is some of ours that's could do without assistance. The paperwork was not that hard, it was just learning something new. I'm an old dog, I do on occasion learn a new trick, but if our EMA director is incapable of doing it, then maybe we've got the wrong EMA director.
I've been through it for years, trying to get it done. And I was pissed, of course, it was only just a sewer repair. And I've run it fifty years on this avenue for two weeks. And where I hauled, they come back and turn it down. My phone is backed up, backed up with information back from, from New Hampshire. And it almost said, oh, we're getting it done, daughter, I'm gonna give you what they need. Oh, well, sir, sir, I don't have some dick. And uh, after talking to the mayor and the head of the county, we brought her on and we talked. I'm glad, I'm glad to have her, the time and the office space are nothing to do with us.
Well, that means that if the sewer board wants to pay consultant, something that's fine.
Well, it'd be a thing to have it, the sewer don't have a thing to have it take care of. I had to file, I don't have an address. I was just in the job, I went another two weeks. I sent in the address of the sewer plant and the tater cat. What I more work you can. It's, it's all, when you run into these super bloody things that you've never run into, the girl wants, wants everything that you need, I just think. So it's almost a comfort for a mission to do this. And that's why I made it with a friend or four.
Mr. Treck?
Yes, sir.
I have to make a motion that we take a quick recess.
Second.
I have a motion for a ten minute break.
Second.
Second, first, I have, I'll let you have it, I give it.
That's voted as a nine out of seven, commission to forward. If I'm not feeling it, please, please.
This is the proper time and place to withdraw my resolution, the one resolution for the second amendment?
Okay.
Or do we wait till that comes up?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor's forum. If not, a boozer will lap out. Hey, Mr. Mayor, would I speak and ask a proclamation to the end there?
Uh, thank you, Chairman Plante. I just want to convey the words of Commissioner Rocky Preston, who's not here. I felt like it's probably the best time to do it. Uh, it's regarding the second amendment resolution. And he wrote on the agenda letter today and he said, this is not a resolution I can support as written. It's perfectly fine with me using our county legislative body and a county commission resolution to message our state lawmakers to oppose any gun law language. But to inform the state with our county defying violating the law should be the state elect to prohibit any firearm and further threaten to become a sanctuary for harboring firearms. The state deemed illegal, I will not support. And I ask that my words and their entirety be made part of the February eighteenth, twenty twenty commission minutes, Commissioner Rocky Preston, I'll give this to clerk for the record. I do believe he was basing that off of the resolution that's in the packet and not the resolution that we intend to pass tonight. At this time, of course, there's a ton of comments, I just want to say that uh, quickly with her, with Bonnie Evans, it was brought up as, as she was a county employee, that she should not be appointed or reappointed to the audit committee. And I had reached out to embed two opinions from legal expertise and they did not see anything in the statutes that prohibited her from being a member of the audit committee. So we proposed that resolution last time and uh, we do need to reappoint her tonight if so. So maybe under any other business, we need to take care of that administrative battle. She is my recommendation for the audit committee. We also have a resignation due to tenure, time expired on March first. Someone will be leaving our audit committee. So the county is soliciting for any interested citizen that wishes to serve on the audit committee. Uh, we still need to fill one more vacant slot. So I encourage you to either contact my office or come to the audit committee a week from Monday night and show up there and express your interest and we'll go about doing an appointment in the month of March. The, of course, there was numerous issues uh, that we addressed and I felt like it was probably better to address those as the citizens brought them, brought forth. However, this is gonna be somewhat of a, a special, but also somewhat somber moment here. I've got proclamations and I would like to ask members, any member from the Wiseman, Thornton, Hayne, or Orchard families to please approach the podium up front. Now, to the citizens of Benton County, uh, many of these individuals do not need to be introduced. They're, they're long and well established families within our community. But over the last couple of months, uh, we have lost members of our community that were pivotal citizens within our community, that helped build us to where we are today and was very active in service to their county. Uh, I've said this many times before, but if you're the first one here, I'm someone who values historical record. And so whenever I issue a proclamation, I always issue it in a public format like this so that it does, that these individuals are not forgotten, that they are actually remembered in the minutes of our history. I think a lot of people, if you don't know, February is the birth month of Benton County. We were organized by statute in December eighteen thirty-five. But our first day of conducting business as a county is February first, eighteen thirty-six. So I wanted to do this proclamation in the birth month of this county. I believe that adds significance to these family members uh, who have, who have passed recently. They do need to be remembered. So, whereas February marks the birth month of Benton County, having been chartered several months prior and then formed, February first, eighteen thirty-six. Whereas claiming their legal, their land grants, American settlers first entered her lands officially for settlement in early eighteen twenty. Such land was reserved for North Carolina Revolutionary War soldiers and, and their particular land grants. Originally created as a section of West Houghbridge County, Benton County would be formed officially sixteen years later. Whereas Benton County has over its one hundred and eighty-four years of existence, had many of her citizens answer the call of public service. Some served with distinction in elected office, others served admirably on empowered boards, committees, or groups, all to further the quality of life of their respective county and community. Benton County has been blessed with leadership by those who sacrificed their personal time, efforts, skills, and experience. Whereas although many could be recognized for their service to our county, lately Benton County has seen distinguished members of its communities who provided public service to our county answer the final call home and departed our world with their heavenly lives. In the spirit of honoring our county's birth month, we also wish to recognize following individuals for their great service to our county. Truly, our county has prospered and grown during their selfless sacrifice and efforts to Benton County. Whereas these recognized individuals are as follows. Faye Hayne, we all know her as Faye. June twenty-fourth, nineteen twenty-five to November thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Known as Faye to all who knew him, he was a lifetime citizen of the Holiday Community. Mr. Kane was a World War II veteran. Always an active citizen within the community, he assisted many researchers over the years regarding Benton County history, as well as being the author of uprange news in our local newspaper for many years. Mr. Kane served on the Benton County Genological Board and was instrumental in the establishment of the Benton County Archives. Louis Butch Fordham, May twelfth, nineteen thirty-seven to January seventh, twenty twenty. A citizen of Hammond, Butch was active in many civic and political capacities related to Benton County, as well as an avid ambassador for the county. A renowned outdoorsman throughout Tennessee, he served as Benton County's last state representative, having served for the seventy-fifth district of Tennessee for eighty years. Jimmy Thornton, July twenty-second, nineteen forty-two to January eighteenth, twenty twenty. A citizen of the Holiday, nineteen twenty- A citizen of the Holiday, Michael Williams community, he served as Benton County Executive from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand six. Mayor Thornton was known throughout the South for his family's silver horses, horse trading, and equa- equine related trading codes in Michael Williams. James Lefty Watson, February ninth nineteen thirty-nine to January twentieth, twenty twenty. A citizen of Camden, he served as a member of the Benton County Court or, and/or Commission, multiple terms, and in multiple civic capacities. A U.S. Army veteran, he was employed for over thirty years in the state of Tennessee. He served as human resource director for Benton County until his retirement. Whereas Benton County is not the same without these individuals, nor is it. But we know life must go on, and in doing so, we honor their spirit and love of the county, these fine public ser- public servants, which on accounting, we all share as a place called home. Whereas we submit this proclamation and remembrance of these public servants and for the historical record, that they will long live after we all have passed. In recognizing these individuals, we also recognize that our county is blessed with fine citizens and leaders. We offer our sympathies to their families, but also our hopes to make our county a better place, to live honorably through our dedicated service to our citizens as they once did. Respectfully submitted and approved to the Benton County Commission on its eighteenth day of February twenty twenty. What I have for mayor of Benton County.
Y'all officially signed the proclamation. We're sorry for the language loss. Y'all know he was truly, uh, right hand, y'all know. And we want to take this opportunity to say, I want to be clear about my services.
Thank you, Ray. Please don't.
I don't have to repeat what I just said. He was a father, he was a special man to me because I turned to him for advice. He sat in this chair as we all knew, took the brunt of criticism, the whir of his accolades. Uh, but I'm proud to have, to have a call him then for, and I'm proud to sit in the seat that he also did. Thank you very much.
Could I just add your particular favor? Right.
I think, I think we're gonna put y'all in the middle of something. I have a question. Very good.
Yeah, because I thought it might have. Other than the, we have two contracts for that I've, uh, submitted to you. We discussed some of these in the, uh, committee, various committees last week. Uh, one is for a FEMA representative, bona fide FEMA representative for the county. Again, I just reiterate the fact that, uh, you get, you go to the experts when you need them. Uh, I believe they'll, they're well worth any investment that we may have to pay for them. And just like, uh, say, with Donna Barrett, probably by the end of the year, when it's all said and done, we'll have paid her a hundred thousand dollars for the services that she has done in the collections. But see the return that she brings with her expertise. I feel like the same thing goes for with the FEMA consultant. We also have to get on board, uh, or sometime get moving on our renegotiation with Waste Management. They are in an agreeable state. They do not have to renegotiate this contract of one thirty-one. Uh, we have got them in a position that I believe is advantageous to this county. Uh, we have been discussing getting a solid waste, uh, consultant and/or a lawyer. Over the past few solid waste board, uh, committees, we opted to go with a solid waste consultant simply because a lawyer brings forth, uh, a lot more money than, than it takes to negotiate a contract in probably a more contentious environment. I believe we have an excellent county attorney who knows contract law very well. However, what he probably doesn't know is solid waste and all the nuances is that go with that. So this consultant is to aid our county attorney in producing a solid, uh, contract with Waste Management that will bring a better return to this county, represent us best, uh, as far as accountability, information, a better cooperative spirit, and also some of these things that we need in this county to clean it up. You know, like assistance with convenience centers, recycling, whatever it may be. Uh, we have Waste Management in a negotiating state. We wish to take advantage of it. I have found us a consultant out of, from the Delta Regional Authority, uh, rep- is representation through there. And he deals with nine or eight or nine states throughout the Mississippi Delta. So he hasn't just seen solid waste in Tennessee, he has seen it all over. I believe he provides us an advantage when it comes to putting forth a solid contract and the negotiation process because, uh, you know, I don't know how much experience Sean has with dealing with multi-band order companies or myself. So we need to make sure we've got the right person, contract to do, assist us with that negotiation. And so the contract that you have with the K group is that particular. Uh, time is somewhat of, of an urgency. We need to get this ball rolling and you have those in your packets. And if you've got any questions, I'll be there and I can answer them.
Really, I can share with what we said of waste. Generally, it's been a big, just a few years, we've, waste has drawn up before. They have a right to charge the citizens to dump in the dump up here. So we've got to negotiate something to let that happen. But I, I think we should do a smart negotiation. I think we should earmark as very keen, thanks that we should, that would lead to raising taxes. This earmark, when we negotiate with them, the dollars it takes, so none of them, they will come out of taxing or fear of the waste, they should have to pay for it. This earmark, so many dollars or a thousand or whatever it takes, the, the, their, their debt is paid for, not, not the citizens of the tax.
And now you go back to the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please, line out a line, approval of the minutes.
Aye.
I have a motion by Angie.
Second.
Second by, standing back there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no, no, it's period. Nine out of ten, reporting for the utility.
Aye.
I have a motion by Mr. Mayor Powers.
Second by Hearn.
Second by Hearn. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye or no, aye, period. Resolution. Uh, time out of eleven, resolution to urge a general assembly to amend the provision of the private act, authorize Benton County to levy a county opposite tax. I have a motion.
Second.
By Mr. Patten, second by Angie. Any discussion?
Michelle. Michelle's the second.
Okay, motion, second. Any discussion? If no discussion, roll call.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Laya Da, yes. Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Gary Fard?
Yes.
Sonny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bakers?
Yes.
Cheryl Hill?
Yes.
Janet Aiken?
Yes.
Roseanne Warren?
Yes.
Darryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Harper?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Donna Patton?
Yeah.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
You know, we should change your vote. Motion, period.
Motion, period, thank you. Line out in twelve, resolution stating that the people of Benton County, Tennessee oppose enactment of the, any legislation that would infringe upon the rights of the people to keep and bear arms within the second amendment and consider such law to be unconstitutional and beyond lawful legislative authority and adopt that Benton County to become a sanctuary county. The motion?
Aye.
Motion, Don Van.
Please.
Second, Mr. Popper?
No, I won't. I'll second.
Darryl, second.
I would like to.
Any discussions?
No.
They're top.
Uh, I would like to withdraw this amendment. Okay, if we can replace it with the other one, uh, if we can replace it with the other one, or put it wherever to go to the second one. But I'd like to withdraw the old two.
Okay.
I will second.
We have a motion. He's gonna withdraw his token.
And put in the new one, yes.
And the next, right, put in the new. So I have a motion by.
Well, he's just withdrawing.
He can draw. Now, we just go back and put yourself in.
We'll bring the other one up and we'll suspend the rule and bring the other one.
Right. Anyway, uh, resolution twelve will be withdrawn.
Okay.
Resolution two.
Or nine out of twelve, resolution two. So now I need a motion to amend to change nine out of twelve, resolution two, to the new. How many votes count? Vote on, pulling resolution two?
Why would we need a vote on if you see the resolution in pulling?
Sorry about that, we'll bring back up other, other business on that. So that proves us line out in thirteen, resolution approving the doctrine that the business have a tendency to come to non-consistent county, requesting that Governor Lee consider our action as our desire to opt out of acceptance and resettlement of refuge in our county.
Motion.
Motion, aye. Patten?
Second by Hearn.
Second by Hearn. Any discussion? No discussion, roll call vote.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Laya Da?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Gary Fard?
Yes.
Sonny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bakers?
Yes.
Cheryl Hill?
Yes.
Janet Aiken?
Yes.
Roseanne Warren?
Yes.
Darryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Harper?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Any areas to change your vote?
Nine out of fourteen, resolution recognizing that the S C R network is no longer partnered with area wide communication and that Scott Hill and S C R network were a component working on behalf of Benton County as the I T director.
Motion, Frager.
Second, Commissioner Frager.
Second.
Per.
Second by Gary Fard. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Out here. Nine out of fifteen, resolution establishing a solid waste department and appointing in the director to run, oversee the department, form all online planning services related to garbage collection and solid waste management in which the county provides. In motion?
Motion.
Second by, second by Angie Hearn. Any discussion? Yes, okay.
The mayor supports this and I understand that some citizens have concerns, but he's wanting to hire a waste management consultant to help renegotiate the expenses that will be incurred by a solid waste department will hopefully be paid for by Waste Management. There's no plan to create a countywide garbage collection or to burden the taxpayers. And I really think that this is, this is a good move for the county and I hope my fellow commissioners will vote for it.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. I'll, I'll also clarify that I have no intentions to hire a solid waste director any time soon. Uh, we can't, we can't afford a solid waste department right now in that grand scheme of things. But in the renegotiation of the contract with Waste Management, hopefully we will, uh, earmark funds that will go to actually fund this department. That's why it's not going to be a negative impact on our current budget, uh, situation over our particular tax rate. But ultimately, we do need to get there to what we call a full-fledged department. The main incentive is to admit, to start getting these convenience centers, uh, applied for grants that we need to get these convenience centers in place first. That's first and then the department's second.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call for a roll call vote on this if you don't mind.
Roll call. Question?
Uh, I just question to the mayor. I just want to make sure this is, that's, no way can adversely affect private relations of a, like Mr. Fox currently right now. This is looking more to grand scheme of things.
Well, conceivably, it will be a resource for Fox's sanitation. It will, you know, there's nothing to ensure that, you know, they're not throwing trash out in the woods or whatever like that, you know? But honestly, it will be a good resource and a good tool for them to be able to utilize these convenience centers who know so. They may, it may be easier for them to service locally and Waste Management, which I'm saying to be done from next. So I think it will have to be Mr. Fox and his business.
So let, let me say this. I live out in the deep area. We have used Mr. Fox for past several years. He does an excellent job, provides a very good service. I allow that area out there to be good service. I just want to make sure we're not adversely impacting him anyway.
If I may say, if this factory, this, this, the whole purpose is eliminating trash, we want to, don't do, she's like, I know it's fucked, the best service ever had for Fox. But this is what we're after, eliminating trash go through the county. Somebody may have a small bag and she'd have to drive fifteen miles to dump. This is, they're told it in the ditch or road and hopefully we, we still don't want to find some people throw down trash once we get this started. It's hard to find somebody with a servant body wouldn't have to drive maybe twenty miles to dump trash. But, but nobody, nobody, it's just a perfection.
They do not have, they cannot find anyone. They do not have the authority to find anyone. They can simply bring it to the attention of someone who does have the authority. Uh, they're not going to be, uh, a deputized type anymore. They're simply going to be our boots on the ground, ensure we don't give illegal dumps throughout our county, but also begin offering convenience to our citizens. The people in Dixie and the people in Holiday desperately need convenience when it comes to their trash situation. And in addition, also getting these grants, save taxpayers money, recycling programs as well.
Mr. Frager?
Mayor, in response to this, I'd like to, as far as to consider an amendment. And on, that'd be on the, where it says utilizing provided garbage collection and other solid waste management services. Should we not consider right there after it says provided garbage collection, add the word centers to make it take some of the question out of what the purpose of this is?
Second, what you're doing with the planning is once they get it planned, that's what they'll actually do, put it together.
Yeah, the garbage collection is considered picking it up, but the centers is an entity and I'd like to propose that in a motion.
Garbage collection centers.
Yes.
I have a motion by Frager, second by Mr. Power.
Say who what?
Would you put it in right after we vote on this?
It's centers, it's C E. I've got a different paper.
I don't have a voice.
I'll do it.
And you do that after this is done, right? But we go ahead and vote on this. You can put it on.
We need to vote on me the minute first, right? Which one from?
It's in two places.
Two places?
Yeah, that's it.
You mean by Frager?
Come on, first. What do I need to do?
We're gonna make, we're gonna follow what you've just done.
Sounds good, me.
No, no. But, all in favor of the amendment, abandon these, uh, protectors?
Centers.
Centers.
Aye.
Aye. No, no, motion case. Now we're gonna have a roll call. Yes.
Yeah, I have some things I want to say about this. First of all, I have talked to people that are against it and I have a lot to say, really. First of all, when we vote this resolution in, then we're just opening the door for the county mayor to take charge and hire a director. First of all, when we vote this resolution in, then we're just opening the door for the county mayor to take charge and hire a director when he gets ready. And it's going to open up a whole new department for this county. We, we don't know what it's going to cost. You're talking about a director and the salary, you're talking about secretary, you're talking about the office and the expenses to operate the office. You're talking about the cost of the convenience sites, the dumpsters, you're talking about a fence around those dumpsters. You've got to have a truck to pick that up and haul it and empty it. You've got to have a truck driver that can do that. Um, you've got to have a person to oversee these sites because I don't care if you've got a fence around it, there's going to be people pull up and dump garbage out right beside the fence. It's happened before, it's going to happen, there's nothing that we can do about that. It will happen. Um, I have talked to a commissioner in Humphreys County and he said, you're asking for a headache. He said, if we had any way at all, a landfill to take our garbage to, we would not have convenient sites around Humphreys County. He said, it is a big expense in their budget and they are not happy with it at all. They have a, it takes a lot of manpower to operate all those sites.
I'd like to say something for you.
Okay.
Where they don't have what we have, we have a landfill. And we have negotiations, negotiate with them and while these little bit talk to them, they will pay for it. We're not going to spend one dime on it. What we're going to do is negotiate with a new contractor, they're going to send it to pay for what it costs and they do the cleanup or, or even pay for that one.
You're saying Waste Management's going to pick it up?
Yes, we're saying all right, anything we're doing.
Say, why haven't we ever had anybody from Waste Management to come to this meeting and talk to us about it and say, yes, we agree, we want to get together and talk about it? Nobody from Waste Management has ever come up here and told us anything that we hear that is being said within. So we don't know what Waste Management's going to do.
It's funny, the one, the old agreement is, it's essential, like we came, you got a thought going out there. I tell you, but we're going to get them before they do run out of the contract, negotiate and bring us, maybe you guys get on that quick.
No, Waste Man, Waste Management has attended two solid waste board. You know, the first time in history that they've been invited to talk to the appropriate entity first, which was the solid waste board. So that's the first step that they did and we've had multiple discussions about this. I guess my, we're one of the only counties in Tennessee without a solid waste department, okay? And we have, it has been recommended in our long-term plans that were instituted before I became mayor, that we would move towards getting a solid waste department. This isn't a new idea. And so, so I always like, as you know, turn the word around on you and say, so what's the solution? What's the solution to, to trash and gullies, ditches, streams, creeks, uh, uh, hollers? We're all, I would rather the people throw the trash out on the fence at a convenience center because that's a lot easier than driving out in the country and getting it. So, but solid waste comes with a cost. It's like sewer. If, these aren't mechanisms that you're trying to look for profit off of. This is to ensure that our county is not a continuous waste dump. So, so the old adage is, what's the cost of not having a, a solid waste department? And that's E W S gets out of control and now we're going to be living for our lifetime with a contaminated dump over here off, off the map, uh, the city limits. It's, it's the, the original negotiation with, uh, the landfill and why Waste Management even came in here to begin with? Because we were looking at multi-million dollars of cleanup and to get that landfill back to the shape of where T D A required it. That was because we did not have a solid waste department. I believe a solid waste department actually works for our benefits and leverages and if we're smart, we use grants and, uh, you know, maybe it breaks even. But even if it doesn't break even and it's just a little bit of loss, it's, it's, is it not worth it? You know, so, so my thing is, what is your solution? What would you propose the county do when it comes to trash?
Well, right now we have landfill and we have free dumping, of course.
But people don't respect it.
Well, they're not going to respect a, a dump site either, they're not going to respect a, a convenient site. If, if Mr. John over here can drive five miles down the road and just throw his garbage out, he's not going to drive eight miles down to a convenience center to do it. He's not going to.
But we don't know that yet and that was, this is time, I've put a lot of thought in, I interviewed multiple solid waste, uh, again, you talked to a commissioner, you didn't talk to their solid Humphreys County Solid Waste Department, who gladly endorsed this particular movement. And, and so we at least, I, it's not an end-all be-all, but it's a start. If someone's looking at a three-mile or a five-mile drive to throw their trash at a convenience center, that might be open three days a week, run by part-time personnel that we don't have to pay benefits on, we just simply pay them hourly. Of course, we need a full timer. Maybe that's the first step in correcting a little bit of the problems we have. Convenience centers are a must, I mean, they don't operate for free. But Waste Management will assist us, they will actually come to that convenience center and take that trash to the dump.
And you've heard them say that?
Yes.
That they will do this, but have you got anything in writing?
It's going to, it's going to be in writing, that's what this contract's about, about getting, getting them into this state and getting them in a room. But they have gone on record of a solid waste committee that they will gladly do that, that that is, that's something that they offer. They offer, they offer recycling assistance, but they don't want a recycling program. They'll bring us dumpsters for it, they'll haul it off and there's no, there's not a lot of money in recycling, so that's again something. But the people want it. Everywhere I go, the people I talk to, obviously a lot different than the people you talk to, because everywhere we go in these town halls, they're craving an option to throw their plastic somewhere, their bottles somewhere, their cardboard and papers somewhere. We've got to start somewhere, this is a start, uh.
I just know that this is going to create a whole new department for this county and it's going to be a big expense. And, and it could fall back on the taxpayers, we don't know that we're going to get grants. You know, this is a, a big department that you're talking about. And I just don't know why you're aware of that, this is going to end up and cost us money.
And we're aware of that and at the end of the day, you say whether it's funded or not. You don't have to fund the budget the way you don't want to, but Waste Management will be funding a, a core foundational element of this department so that it can operate at least and offer some services to the county.
Well, I'm sorry that I have not attended some of those meetings, but I wish somebody from Waste Management would come up here and talk to the full commission and the people out in the audience about it.
And that may be, I, I, in fact, I worry about putting down that they have the whole public meetings, you know, because they, they haven't been very public. But that's our fault, that's not their fault, okay? That's a leadership issue and good leadership brings them into discussion and allows it for them to be able to talk to our citizens. Until I sat down on this desk, Waste Management was the dark vader of the community. No one wanted to touch them with a ten-foot pole. But if we, we've got to build relationships, just like having Mr. Paul offer here with Kovea today. No one's ever invited him to come and talk and, and speak and clarify severance from mineral taxes or what can help his business if we do this or do that. Uh, we, again, I'm the leader that's trying to show us the way I believe represents the best part of our county's interest. I'm, I'm supporting it, I'm not the only one. I've wanted, I wanted to sign on to their resolution because I believe it's to the best interest of every county.
Those are what I do, couple of them with me, talk with them, they want to be a part, you know, we're a governor, we want you to buy in on it. We got, you know, a ball size, park size, whatever it is, that they advertise, be part of a hometown work. But they are actually willing to do it, they just never been asked. And that's why we want to renegotiate to get them in parts, and what we talked about, they feel like the, it's not asking too much. They can't do it within a six, a three-month period, they've got to give them time to appear the, the expenditure there to the, to the garbage people to add it to them, so this one we got to handle. So that's what we're hoping. Mr. Powers, I, I ask for, did you care?
Is, is my understanding that, I think you said at the last commission meeting, Mayor, that, um, the department would be probably funded by litter grants? Is that correct?
No, we have two elements of solid waste already in existence. It's called a tire recycling center and it's basically our litter. Now, we, we hand the litter gram off to the sheriff's office to manage, but technically litter gram is a solid waste being. So maybe it flows through a solid waste budget and really that's all we're doing right now, is merging two budgets into one. We haven't funded it with one extra dollar than we already do in, in, in the current budget. And I will not propose adding one dollar to that, that we do not have a revenue stream for. The con, renegotiation of Waste Management will be that revenue stream.
Well, I myself, I, uh, I live about twenty-four miles from Canton and then it's another mile, so it's probably my little path up to the, um, to the dump. And, um, so that's fifty miles round trip for me to bring my garbage. And, um, sometimes, um, I was paying Fox to pick it up, but a lot of times because of my road, that couldn't, that couldn't get back there and pick it up. And so I'm, I'm really for this department if we don't just, just to get some, apply for some grants. Because you said we couldn't apply for any without this solid waste department. We don't have to fund it right now, we can, uh, fund it as needed. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you. And, and just to give you an assurance, you know, I won't always be the county mayor, you know, you won't always be the county commissioner. So there's, there's not always a guarantee, but ultimately this is the legislative body that, that handles the purse strings to that particular budget. And, and I invite whatever language that we need to put in, if you suggest that we ensure that this does not grow into a big behemoth of something. I simply believe we need something in place to get the ball rolling to, to basically reverse any illegal dumping, the trash, the litter, uh, throughout this county.
Speaking for the citizens of the sixth district and, and the other two commissioners can attest, everybody from our every county, Big Sandy welcomes a, a trash center down there, a ward. They need it, we've got a lot of elderly people that live down there that can't drive up here to the dump that often, they can't afford to get somebody to, to pick up their trash. This would help them along.
Thanks, Governor. Mr. Frager.
Um, if it would help, why can we not add the language to this resolution upon funding provided through Waste Management? I should take the fear out of it being funded by the county.
It already states how, how we're going to pay for that, so, you know, if you look in it, it tells you how we're not. It, it has to be funded by the budget before we ever do anything.
Well, that's what I have to say, Mr. Humphreys, says right here, number one, a solid waste department shall be established for Benton County, returned to P C A section by, I think that's what I'm, funded by the county vote.
All funded, that's your vote, but.
And ultimately it is, money is flow through money. We, we earmark it in the contract to say a small percentage of whatever intake, additional intake, not current intake, but additional intake collected through a renegotiation process will go towards it. It may fund it not even at a hundred percent, we're not going to, it keeps us from growing, you know? But we're still at, at least a year and a half away from even beginning to fund that department. First things first, and that's to get something on paper so that we can apply for grants. So that when we do go into operation, we've already got those convenience centers ready to go.
I believe people in the Holiday area would, would most definitely benefit from that too, because they're, they live with a lot of elderly, they live far away from town, they're having to pay for trash picked up, some open camp at the morning. Um, I know our neighbors, you're actually having to take it to the.
This is getting riled up in a town hall meeting, and of course, I'd say we're having a little different in it, but, uh, side night each year, each one, one door up south. I'd say, I know myself that didn't have, I'm still going to continue with, with Fox, but.
I have, I have my garden picked up every month for the last ten years.
Fox.
They take one bag, you're fifty.
Yeah.
I want to call a question to win this vote on this.
Here we go.
Ward?
Yes, sir.
They have yet to commit solid waste in writing that they was funding, is that correct?
You can't ask them yet, the other, the order called, no contract, nothing. They ain't, they're pumping up. They called and ordered to vote, just go ahead and do that. Once he done it, have a roll call vote.
Lynn Miller?
No.
Foye Da?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
No.
Phil Milton?
No.
Doug Bakers?
Yes.
Shell Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higgin?
Yes.
Wasan Ward?
No.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Honey Hawker?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Ford Plowin?
Yes.
Anyone would you change your vote? Levius? And, um, porno? One fast.
This is line item twenty-four, resolution appropriating funds in amount.
Oi.
Fourth giving her.
Well, it's almost four o'clock, he's ready to go home.
Uh, six, ten.
I have a motion that would combine six through nine.
Second.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
If I may, it's got a citizen wanting to address, if you don't mind.
I'm going to, two lady of evening, y'all who decided to throw kids out and party the other day, which I'll never did do a vote on.
If that didn't.
Um, motion to combine resolution six through nine by Foye Da, second by.
Over the paper, come back.
Yes.
Back and read them, this looks, but you're telling, sleeping in the mountain for one hot. We got five now, please, a little bit, please. Sorry. Thank you. Combining resolution budget and funds in the receiving amount of three hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred fifty-eight. Ten cents received from the state aid grant for reimbursement, insurance recovery from the highway budget department. Seventeen, line item seventeen, budgeted resolution budget and funds in the amount of two hundred seventy-five dollars within the sheriff's department budget. Line item eighteen, resolution budget and funds in the amount of twelve thousand, several hundred and fifty dollars received from the city of Evans allocation, allocation in the library budget. Line item nineteen, resolution budget and funds in the amount of twenty thousand, six hundred ninety dollars received from the sale of the eleventh tax property, Eva Road Oceans located at two twenty, excuse me, two thirty-three Eva Road. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Lynn, second by Mr. Powers. Any discussions? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, no no, I care. This is line item twenty, resolution appropriating funds in the amount of three hundred forty-one dollars, seventy cents from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund in order to recover the maintenance fee increased for the water tank at the industrial park. Motion?
Motion.
Motion. Have a motion.
Second.
Second for Rosier. Motion, but. Andrew, a copy of the.
Hi, Dan. Can I see your copy of the, I think we may need to make the, make me. Okay, that should not be your county general fund. That should stay, unassigned fund balance from fund one seventy-two where your water tank is saved from.
To reaminate it?
To re-fund one seventy-two?
Once again.
Once again.
Need a motion to change?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to change.
Change. This line item to one seventy-two. One seventy-two. That being saved.
I second.
I second the move. Make the first, protect, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I agree, and let's go to, roll call vote.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Colia Dye?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Terry Firth?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bakers?
Yes.
Cheryl Hill?
Yes.
Janet Heaton?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Pass that amendment.
Thank you, nurse, cheers. Resolution twenty-one, uh, here we, line item twenty-one, resolution appropriating funds in the amount of three thousand thirty-seven dollars sixty-one cents for the interest on the twenty-eighteen illegal tax property which have been turned over to the county. Is a motion?
Marvin?
Motion, Marvin, a roll call, second by Kenneth. Any discussion? If not, roll call.
That used to be a...
Roll call.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Colia Dye?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Terry Firth?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bakers?
Yes.
Cheryl Hill?
Yes.
Janet Heaton?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion.
Line item twenty-two, I think the sheriff and I had talked here about pulling that, what's running on this, unless you go ahead and make the favor.
Uh, Chair, and Chair, if I'd like for y'all to reconsider pulling it, we can do that up to that amount since we got it out the bids. I think time is of the essence with your units. Those units only have a three-year warranty.
What we hope to do is prepare to pull it, but in turn to give the sheriff, if that thing goes out, we all know it's an emergency. We don't have the, the exact dollar for what it's going to cost, it'd be another resolution is to pull it, and, and when you get your bids, come back, if it don't blow up, we come back and have it on next month, if it does blow up, we're going to fix it, it's not, it's an emergency.
Hey, you don't know, you don't know how true what you're saying. We don't know how true what you're saying.
Well, it's not, and we know that, but, I mean, if you do it now, we don't want the dollar cost to you. And that gives you time, thank you, Kenneth.
What is, what other suggestion is to keep the resolution as originally written with the reserve appropriation? So if you don't use all of your reserve appropriation of the twenty-three thousand, then the remaining balance will revert back to that reserve account. It's a bookkeeping that there, but...
I'm trying to just pull it, if it doesn't, I mean, you don't have to have the figure to go check, you know? And we're going to fix, you just...
We can, we can pull it, or we can lay it, I just want to know if this thing goes out, I've got the funds sitting there that I can get fixed. We don't, it's off, it's not legal.
Give me an answer.
The bids are still coming in, we haven't got them all, as soon as they're in, we need to get it fixed, but in the meantime, it's, it's going anytime.
I think that's a proper thing to do, but I...
So is there, is there any discussion on this that needs to be covered, or questions?
Well, I think twenty-three thousand dollars is a lot, but maybe I don't know what we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
It's more boiler than water tank.
If you have like, I'll enlighten you on my research.
Because y'all said water heater, water heater and boiler system are two different completely.
May I elaborate?
Yes.
There's certain kind of...
As chairman of property of this twenty-three thousand dollar water heater, I have my doubt. So, me and Greg Pfeifer view this unit, it is legally a boiler. Boiler requires specific license, specific inspections, of which we have not had done at all. This unit, through the jail inspections, have noticed corrosion on our unit. In my research, I found out they're only good for three years. So it's not a scary thought. Okay, this unit also was right beside the heat and air unit, so there's no room to do two fifties. Anything over eighty gallons creates a boiler situation. So we're having to find, we just can't get Joe's plumbing. So CEC license involved, and maybe two or three of them. So, yes, I'm surprised, but I wanted to set the limit at that amount, and she's got a state bid contractor that's already bid that amount. Uh, hopefully we can find somebody else to save us four, five thousand dollars, is my goal. Uh, so, Greg Pfeifer's recovering the bids for you, correct, Chair?
I believe, I believe Greg's the one taking the bid. I know we've got three bids on it now, is that correct?
I'm not aware of it. My two did not come in today.
Okay, I thought, I thought we got them.
It's not going to be fixed if you have to reset. Re-lag it?
I don't know if that's true, maintenance man's been taking care of it, he's been on our...
Since the original?
The jail inspector.
It's my fault, yes.
I've been saying that is, the only thing missing on the thing is a massive sticker. It look like a rocket booster. It's even going to have to have earthquake shutdown sticker on it, okay? So this is a very complicated situation, I just hope you ain't got no more of it.
Well, you have two options, to either pass the original resolution with an amount that is actually listed for the appropriation, or to pull it. This resolution that was handed to me tonight with a blank amount, you cannot, that's a budget amendment, you cannot do that, you have to have an actual amount.
I didn't know what to put in.
Yeah, we can, we can do a budget amendment without the actual appropriated amount.
Chair, if you want to pull it?
Actually, what would be the easiest thing for us to do for bookkeeping purposes, as long as I know we've got, we can pull it.
You know what, it doesn't matter, because either way, we're either appropriating and not going to use all the reserves, and we're going to make the entries later, or I'm going back and doing a resolution again next month, so it doesn't really matter. You, whatever you guys need to do, it's your call, Chair, it's your resolution.
I'd like to pull a resolution with the understanding that should this boiler go out, that we will appropriate the money to get fixed, and it won't be any more than what this, this is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion, pull. That puts a line item twenty-three. Resolution appropriating funds in the amount of five hundred forty dollars from the jail courthouse or workhouse litigation tax reserve carry in order to pay the outstanding invoice to Heat Co. and Davis for the deal of the jail building modification possible. Is a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Daryl Hicks, second, Kenneth. Any discussion? No discussion, and it's roll call vote.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Colia Dye?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Terry Firth?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bakers?
Yes.
Cheryl Hill?
Yes.
Janet Heaton?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion. I have the one and four. Resolution appropriating funds in the amount of four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty cents from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund in order to pay for half of the annual malpractice insurance policy premium that is required by law, for Dr. Scott Portis to continue acting as the county manager for the town.
Motion, Frank.
Second, a victory. Any discussion?
It wasn't for the budget.
Want to prove, yes.
Yeah, why? Was he asking for us to...
He's actually, he's retired from that, but before his medical practice paid, now he no longer has practice in his position, so...
He was asking us to split the bill for half.
So, because he would be retired otherwise. He's only keeping that so he can do a medical...
I don't know if we've got another that we could give, just, the honor is just passed, but I don't want...
Henry, Henry County's paying the other half.
Yeah.
He's asking us to pay half, um, since he no longer has an active practice by law, he has to have malpractice insurance.
Since him being a doctor, he'd like to work himself.
He has, he's been...
I've known Dr. Scott Portis over for forty years. He's taken care of my family and people all over West Tennessee. He's not a better MD and physician out there on the state of Tennessee. Such an honorable person, does an outstanding job, and so, so very beneficial to people of West Tennessee for so many years, I hope he passes this.
Any roll call vote?
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Colia Dye?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Terry Firth?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bakers?
Yes.
Cheryl Hill?
Yes.
Janet Heaton?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion.
Any notice? No, no? I'm going to find, there's no more for the notice. Right. Line item twenty-six, any other...
I was going to make a motion to suspend the rules. I was raising my hand like I'm...
Let's make a motion. And I want to be...
Aaron's first, second, third, fourth.
This is the end, you're second.
On the roll call.
No other discussion, Matthew, I'm in.
This is, you're not suspending the rules.
Roll call vote for suspension rules.
Roll call, for suspension rule.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Colia Dye?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Terry Firth?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bakers?
Yes.
For Cheryl Hill?
Yes.
Janet Heaton?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Making motion for the second amendment?
I have a motion by Angie Hearn. Second, Sunny Hall. And in this, we also could request to add, except certain lines, uh, you don't say that here, what you wanted to add to this.
I've got it. We're on section three, uh, paragraph A, where it says which restricts an individual's constitutional rights, we want to insert or violates after the word restricts. Which restricts or violates an individual's constitutional right.
Did you get a motion in the second, with the second amendment?
Oh. This is for the...
This is on the second.
No, it's the...
I'm going to... Section three, here, that I... I'll make a motion that we have made.
I have a motion.
And I'll play that again.
Kenneth?
Discussions that we're doing?
I want, kind of do a, do I need to do a second amendment prior to this, or do it together? I want to, any commissioners that want to be included in this amendment be on there as well. Anybody who wants to have that.
Their votes going to be on there anyway.
What, was only three on there?
What, what on the...
Any commissioners?
Hold on, amendment itself.
Yes, like sponsored by, there were like three of us on there. Anybody's name who wants to be on it.
We will do that with just, with this, actually, immediately, anybody who wants to be on it, the same.
Okay, I just know how you go about with...
The same, ninety-two, which they don't. I'll say, they carried it in here from the... They've got a list of names that support what we're doing.
If y'all do, that's great, I was...
Right, we just go for the sign. So I have a motion out there to amend, yes, we're done, now I need to go with the votes.
Wait, are we voting on the amendment, or are we voting on the resolution?
Yeah, we have, this is the amendment. The motion by the Norman Fraser, second by Kenneth Miller, to amend section three, the rule or regulation that restricts or violates mortgage. So...
I'll look, thank you.
Hi.
Hold up. Now we're going to vote, to act on this thing. Now they're voting to, to add to the work.
Motion, motion.
Just to approve this.
Approve this, we need, need a motion.
You got a motion?
Motion, Kenneth.
Okay.
Second, Terry Firth, all in favor?
Wait, discussion?
What's, go ahead.
Um, I... I received a phone call this weekend, in, in the interest of having all viewpoints publicly expressed, uh, I am all for this amendment, but I got a phone call from someone in my district who is very much against it, and he is very much for the red flag laws, and he stated his position and why he felt that way. And I respected that, you know, as a person in my district, he has a right to voice his views, that our county commission is open to hearing views even when they don't agree with the majority. So in the interest of just giving that person in my district a voice, I just want to say that there are some people who are against it.
Thanks, brother, discussion. If not, you don't have a roll call, you don't... All in the paper. What you may have?
Hi.
I'm creating, go ahead, roll, roll, roll. Roll, call, vote.
When I ask that, that's it, that's it. You, you back, we're doing something.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Colia Dye?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Terry Firth?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bakers?
Yes.
Cheryl Hill?
Yes.
Janet Heaton?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
So, okay. On our twenty-seventh, motion to adjourn.
Hold on, mayor. We suspended rules, I have a motion to put the contract consultant on the floor. I make a motion to put a contract consultant on the floor. For, uh.
What?
No, the, uh, solid waste. For the solid waste. The K group. K group.
And just to let you know, like, the contracts are part of the responsibility of the county mayor. You know, it comes to the administrative board, and I've added these, and these are pretty much my choices. As, uh, who I believe is the best to conduct this particular action. Now, none of theirs, there's no appropriation in these particular contracts. However, I do believe your buy-in or approval of this is, is significant. And because it allows us to get started. You know, when it comes to monies coming in and out, all that will be handled at that particular time. But this is to basically allow us the ability to get on the negotiation floor, uh, with waste management. Mr. Chairman, I second this motion. Second. All in favor? All in favor?
I, um.
Here's your vote. Here.
Want to make a motion to appoint Ms. Evans to the audit committee?
Second, that.
Well, we had the resolution in last once package, and we held it off for this particular month. So basically, it's just affirming that my selection for the audit committee with Ms. Bonnie Evans, uh, continues from her, the expiration, uh, of her upcoming, uh, appointment, which I believe expires on February twenty-ninth or twenty-eighth. This year. So it's four, it's a regular four-year.
They just made a motion in the second from the floor, and then Rochelle.
I am so sorry to keep getting that person today. Um, I've had some people bring to me concern about an employee of the county serving on the audit committee. I contacted C-CAS, as I normally do when there's a question about what is a properly pressed due and what is not. I think the world of Bonnie Evans, she has done a fantastic job on the audit committee. However, I got an email from Mike Gayley. And C-CAS sponsors opinions on things, and then they publish them so that counties can read them. His opinion is, I do not believe county employees are eligible for membership on the audit committee due to their relationship with management. It is my interpretation that they are not external to management. In a C-CAS sample resolution, this is also covered in section two. To ensure the committee's independence and effectiveness, no audit committee member will be an elected official with the exception of elected county commissioners. Employee, spouse of an official employee, a person that commingles assets with an official employee of said county. So if the resident employee wants to confirm that, that's fine, but I tend to go with what C-CAS recommends, and I, I will have to vote against it.
Can we talk to Rochelle about, if you'd like to go with the drawing it all? I would like to say some, if, uh, some of the commissioners that are here that was in the, um, previous commission, we went through this with another employee. Um, there was an employee that worked up here, put on the audit committee, and they researched it, and we found that she couldn't serve because she was an employee of the county. Just bring that up.
And I value C-CAS twice a lot of times. Again, I went through two legal authorities, the board is, and they just said, as long as that person sustains, or anything that would be directly impacting their particular office, that they would qualify. So we got conflicted, and I'm okay with not appointing. But if we don't appoint, we've got to find someone. Somebody has to step up to volunteer for these committees. And so we're at the mercy of who steps forward to volunteer. And that's why I'm willing to take that particular risk of saying, hey, she may be a county employee, but we've got a willing bite, you know, to, to do that. She performed well, she came with the recommendation of her peers on that audit committee, and, uh, uh, but, to respect that opinion, if that's what you want to do, then we've got to promote this. We've got to bring people to the table to serve on these committees. For Jake.
I'd like to hear from our county attorney on this, if y'all have time.
Well, I would just like to break over to you that could be added, you know, I would say on that. But my reading, or at least the thinking that was given was that it is fine for this. The statute that was in play here talks about, it's pretty broad. I think, uh, Commissioner Chell, part of, one of the phrases in that, it says the audit committee members shall be external to management and may be members of the governing body, and heated, it's like big body. Citizens from within the boundaries of local government or a combination of both. So it's a pretty wide range, uh, of, of seeing pool. It just says that basically, uh, that they need to follow the public business rules and probably refuse those sort of codes if necessary, but, um, I don't think either of that is what that means statute and, or the opinion of, uh, the management of the community themselves.
And thanks for the, special. And maybe we, maybe just amend that motion to say the order for six months. Give us some time or whatever. I mean, I just know the audit committee needs to continue to function. And right now, we have two, oh, we have two agencies on that. All right, it won't be, go ahead, vote on it. Go with it, roll it, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Just, lady, ready?
We're definitely violation of what the county statute states in that Ms. Evans is not supposed to be on there because she's a county official. We did that earlier, we had somebody that came on. Why didn't we just go ahead and put our opening through the county, four people, asking them through the newspaper to come in and submit that they would like to serve on the audit committee? We haven't done anything, it's just, I, you know, no, no disrespect, sir, but it's just your recommendation. We haven't given anybody else an opportunity to come forward.
Senator Attorney Speaker, he, he gives the authority by saying.
Well, I mean, we just got those, somebody says it's a county official, the statute itself says it could even, I mean, you consider it all a county official. The statute allows for certain officials, so if we just say it's excluded for a county official, that's not correct in the statute. But if you want me to actually do a legal opinion on it, I can research further and give an opinion, but that was not something that really, I would, I just looked at, cursor review the statute, and I would, I would caution you not to run. I don't know what the research was done, because it wasn't done.
I, I've actually gone through C-CAS as well, and then they made states.
Well, the research says it's because of, based upon being a county official, that's incorrect, because the statute specifically states nine, three, four, five, says, the audit committee members shall be external and may be members of the governing body. Members of this governing body are officials.
She's not an official, she's a employee of the county.
She's a part.
So what I'm saying is, the only caveat I'm saying not, the only caveat of not doing it is saying that it's a member of management, which is a very small pool. If, if you have something that says that, then tell me, because I like to live it, because, you know, when we get into these conversations about this and that, this and that, I base my opinion on legal opinions, not just based on personal.
Mr. Mayor, how long, how long has she just been serving, sir?
Oh, she was an interim appointment, so she finished out a term, and now this is the full regular term coming up. Uh, I believe she filled Debbie Lee's when she resigned, and she, she filled that. The appointment is technically my, I can, I can pick and choose that particular person based upon a good instinct, you know. However, we, we did make a mention of this in the December, uh, commission meeting and in the January meeting, and we like, we advertised for the upcoming opening by Mr. Don Myers, who submitted. I did not choose to advertise for Ms. Evans's, because, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. She did a good job, she's engaged, I actually interviewed the audit committee, like, you know, without her at present, and they all gave her the affirmation that she does a good job. So I, I think she does a good job, but again, I'm also, I'm also respecting that if this is going to cause division and all that, uh, we can go on. But I just know the audit committee needs to conduct this, so they can move on. And, uh, and I entertain, if you have an interest, I'll entertain that, and if we do have an opening, I guess, cut to the chase, right now, I'm recommending Ms. Bonnie Evans. Come hell or high water they call, you know, I'm recommending her to a new term. I have a question, so we're going to have to vote on it. Make the hits. Let's take a vote on it. And we're, we're good. My roll call. Roll call, all in favor of Ms. Bonnie continuing on the audit committee?
Let's go roll call.
Roll call vote.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Playa Dye?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Harry Furd?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Beakers?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
No.
Janet Higdon?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
No.
Darrell Beeks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Tyler?
Yes.
Angie Turner? Don Patton? Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
I'm trying to, I, I.
Go from yes to no, right?
Yes, thanks. Ayes.
Everyone ayes? None yes, what ayes? None yes?
Motion ayes.
Motion ayes.
Motion ayes.
Does that process?
The chair.
Yes.
Does the, uh, does the body want me to look at the issues, like, whether they want to comment on these cases? This came from Attorney General, more Attorney General in the United States, but if they want me to look at it or not, I speak.
I think they could look at the, for future information.
And the, uh, Commissioner Chell, like, the.
No.
Chair, if anybody interested, yeah.
Maybe he's so tired of the train.
All right. I have another here while we've got the suspended rules in place. It's something to do with the, uh, the contract is made and entered into the, by, between Benton County and Salsa, I have trouble pronouncing it, Salsa LLC Company, uh, proposed, uh, by Benton County hereby engage to service, uh, salsa, I let you pronounce it different. LLC company, and salsa hereby agrees to render those certain services described in paragraph three scope of service below. This is the contract with the, uh, with the FEMA. Lady that was up there, she, the one that was, talked about the FEMA diagram, and I, uh, need a motion.
Paul Rosen.
I have a motion, Kenneth, and Keela, second. Any discussion?
Is this, is this to suspend the rules, or is this on the issue of rules of basis?
The rules are suspended, okay.
Okay, I have discussion.
Okay.
I am all for hiring experts, the Barrett Group, the Waste Management Consultant, that is expertise we do not have, and yes, you need to pay for. The expertise to complete these FEMA applications is right here in this county. There is no reason to pay a portion of what we can recruit from FEMA to an outside agency. I hope all the commissioners will send a solid no to this proposal.
Ms., Rochelle, can I bring up something?
Yes, sir.
I know your office is very busy, because we just hired you another officer personally to do the paperwork. And I know my office is at home, I don't have the ability of nothing to do it myself. I'm just a commissioner. This thing is further out of most people's range of doing it, because there's, there's situations in this that we don't, we don't know what to calculate. Such as, uh, when you have a, have a garbage container, they pay for that, they pay for the services of bringing it out there, a trailer carrying your equipment to you. They, I don't know all that stuff, all I know is the sewer down, and I have no way to support, and I'm looking to probably get back, hopefully around twenty-five, thirty-five dollars on the sewer. And her fees seventeen, twenty, seventy-five hundred dollars to, to fill out the inspection, I have no way to do it. So I'm just saying, I know you've got all that time in your office to do it, is what you're saying. If you want to say you want to do it, and you go every dime, I'm going to bring you this phone, I want to reject what you, what we're doing, but I don't think you've got the time, but no, there's no. Because they are expertise, uh, she brought up things I get money on, and I have no idea, I'm bringing, and I've been there, there are a lot of it, but we definitely need it. So, Mr., I'm asking you for it. And, and what we've done, time is of the essence to agree, because FEMA had to open up the window that was already closed, just so we can apply for the Benton, Decatur, Special Sewer. So this is how this came, that, this isn't a fly-by-night company, they actually come recommended from Hardin County, Decatur County, Madison County. And that was the first people I reached out to, was Decatur County, who's experienced more disasters than Benton. So, so with this particular individual, they can't go back, you know, uh, Mr. Carter has already filed for the highway, and put some of yours on there. But within a fifteen-minute conversation today with FEMA, they had already, they had already identified five, six, seven items that were left off of that particular submittal. So if, if, if that department is so thorough and so expert, how can a FEMA person identify seven things? Now, but all they do is aid the highway department, nothing's going to prevent them from doing their submittal. Uh, they can assist in this, of course, we need their assistance, but I'm hedging our bets that they give us more than what we're capable of giving ourselves. That they have the expertise, they know where to look, and you know what, it's a two-year contract. We can always push it off in the end, I would ultimately like to have an E and A corrector, uh, once Mr. Keen, you know, uh, you know, moves on, whatever, uh, that is our expert. So this isn't something I want to be a perpetual type relationship, but I do know right now, we're already behind a bar. And we have got the Benton Decatur Sewer District that this is specifically going to deal with right now. So Buck's already, Buck's already made his submittal, and he can continue to, uh, update his, I know that we're not going to do the Benton Decatur Sewer District, you know.
So this is most, this is mostly to assist the Benton Decatur Sewer District.
It is, but it can also, it can also get additional one.
Fire departments are involved in this, volunteer fire departments, uh, there's some other entities that are involved, and I'm sorry to interrupt, I've got to ask a question, I don't mean nothing. The Sheriff's Department's claim, when was it filed, was it filed with Buck's?
Uh, it was filed today on top of us, because up to now, I didn't know we could do that.
All right, with Buck standing here, I've got to ask the question, Buck, there's a window of opportunity for this, correct?
There is.
And it expired when?
It hasn't, because it, as long as you've got things going on, they will not expire.
I think that's good. No, I didn't know that.
You can give me six months.
But you do have a window to get your additional submittal. Now, yeah, it's like, when you get these people in here, they're only as good as we are. The su, the minute something happens, our boots hit the ground, we're out there. I am constantly, I, when I get, when I get in that truck, I'm writing down the time, the date, where I'm going, what's going on. I keep a log, a thorough log, equipment, personnel, trucks, where they're at, what they're doing. There's several different categories of these, these storms, I mean, there, there's category As, there's category Bs, there's overtime, there's regular time. You cannot recoup regular time unless you're moving debris. There's things like that, emergency, you can get every dime of it back, plus your equipment, your overtime, your people, lots of things. FEMA will come and sit down with you. They will go through this line item by line item, and it's very complicated, they're not copycatists. They came to our office, they sat down, I sat right there with them, we already had our paperwork done, she went through it, she found nothing else. She says, we're good. We signed off on it, these people came the other day, I was not there, my mother passed away, I couldn't be there, they came the other day, Teresa thought they were FEMA, they never told her who they was. And whenever they, whenever she figured out what was going on, they told her, well, we need to get you this paperwork where you can see this, and she said, send it to me. They sent it to her, she done filled it out, signed audit, but we done signed off on it with FEMA exactly what they sent us. So we're here again, guys.
Now, you said the FEMA representative, can you tell us who it is?
Whoever was, whoever the.
Not them, but the one that you sat down and told you to go with.
Who was? Ms. Mary.
Who?
Ms. Mary, I can't remember her last name.
Ms. Mary Lawrence.
There you go.
She sat in our office this morning and found multiple.
That's another fact, that's another fact. When you have somebody come in here like this, please call me, I'd like to talk to them too.
Buck, I had a couple, this all started over the sewer, and it, it, well, Dr. Sewer, well, who worked this and who done that? Well, we found out, she said, well, it's key, but all, Buck's hard. Well, she got into it, and then she, she grabbed her head, I'm just going to give you this press, but she made it. I'm confused, she said, this is all supposed to be back here in this office, everything, the, the luck card, the sheriff and them, we should be.
Why didn't you call me?
Well, we didn't, this was all, she said, this is just discovered, I, well, you weren't involved, I'm doing sewer.
First of all, I mean, that's.
We doing sewer, that's what we're doing, that's what I'm saying, it's not like you know that. The chain, the chain of command, the chain of command is, you go through mine, I don't go through your.
That's right.
Okay? So that was the specific thing, she's specific, she says, why did Benton County got these multiple submittals? Like, now you have been proactive, so that's why, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. But that doesn't mean that we haven't overlooked various entities within our county in the past, or maybe the Sheriff's Department. Benton County's going to make one FEMA submittal from this state forward.
You bet, I agree with you, I own more than that.
And, and so, so that's why I am recommending, if not for your department, for the rest of departments in Benton County, that we have a proper expert, just like I said with the revenue person. You know, Ashley had to work her tail off to get information, Sherri Deasley had to work their tail off to get information. That's all she does is collect info, collect data too, but you know what, at two point six million dollars she's got in this county, uh, I think it's a, I think it's a good risk, I think it's good money spent. And I would just know, Decatur County, it, go ask them if they, if their highway guy wants to do it. Because right now, Decatur County uses them and look at the damage that they have. So I think if it's good for Decatur County, if it's good for Madison County, if it's good for Hardin County, if it's good for multiple other counties, I kind of think it's to our best interest that when that next disaster hits, you're better off on the roads and they're better off preparing the information.
We're preparing for them.
Okay, well again, and, and, and that doesn't hurt, but you're one spoke of the wheel of the grand picture.
But I want every penny that we're going to get back to something right here, I don't want it to go somewhere else. I want every penny-
Nobody, nobody.
No, it's a big disaster, say fifty, it does, and it's going to have to be the big earthquake. It's going to be so big and much, it's going to take somebody-
I just should just let you know, and that's why we wrote in this contract, this contract is specifically for this event that just happened.
Okay.
You know what I mean? It's, it's to go back for two years over this.
And, and for, for y'all's information, y'all were here in two thousand and ten. Some of you might have been, I think, I think Sunny might have been, but, uh, that particular event was a little over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, just highway damage. And we recouped that. We got a debris bill, we recouped that one, and we didn't have to pay anybody to do it.
Look what we're saying there.
I understand.
And then Sheriff's Department filed, it said, what we're trying to do is make sure everybody, if he's got guard down the road, they're paying them overtime. See, it, it's, it's-
All we have-
You want to pay the mind, CTPO, if, what we're trying to do is focus that we all are involved in.
Exactly, we can do that in-house.
The sheriff-
All we have to do, yes, sir.
And everybody-
We can do that.
-assists in this project in that.
We can do that.
Everybody assists putting together the, but they also write grants. So when they come upon something and they see that your generator's around, they know how to write the grants and block that, say, things like that.
Well, I say, well, I, I've done a little research on their company too, they sell generators, they sell this, they sell that. I mean, there's a little conflict interest right there, I'm going to say it.
I, I would say, I would say when that, when that particular thing comes, uh, you're welcome to prove that point and we'll make sure that we do it.
It's our website.
You know, so.
I'm sorry I disagree with everything, but I'm, I'm speaking my mind and I, I'm doing what I think is best for this county and best for, for, for what we do. But I understand the place where you're coming from and-
Next one, we may have, we're just tropical storms, all those.
Yeah, next event happens, we may have to, you know, we may, we can all get our heads together. We may anticipate a little bit better than what's been going on, guys.
I agree with that.
That I agree with. You know, when, when, when the mayor comes up with something to take comment, talk to me. I'm here to-
And that works both ways, before, before you submit your FEMA application, I need you to come to my office.
You bet, come on, I, I, from now on, that'll happen, but, and I mean, but, but it's going to be right.
But I know that I did not submit that application, so you took it upon yourself to submit that on my-
FEMA took it.
So, so, so again-
She took it.
That goes through my office in the future, you know, the mayor's office. And, and that's the best way, that's the best way to serve citizens in Benton County, you know. So again, it's a learning process, uh, and that's, again, and I wanted them to meet you because you're good, you know. But you weren't there that day and all, you know.
I was here, I'd be here about five thirty.
But you weren't there that day, you know, your mother.
I've got a question.
One more question, we're-
I'm sorry, but I've got to ask a question. And I heard the EMA director was supposed to be gathering this data originally, is that correct? All right, I, I just dealt with the EMA director in Humphreys County gathering data. So apparently we need to have the parties get together and get this chain of command resolved, the who's responsible is what, and that's what I recommend.
What brought this over to me, say? Catering owns as much as the sewer as Benton County. I couldn't get nothing out of Cater, this is money that would never have been rolled back. If I hadn't done what I done, I've been the chairman of the sewer, we never would have got a dime of this thing. So we're hoping, you know, fifteen thousand dollar lot of money, my buddy.
Let me, let me ask another question. If, if Decatur County is using this to sew the firm and they have as much at stake as we do, why didn't they go through that side to get this money for the Benton Sewer?
They weren't interested in, in the sewer, the sewer is mostly in Benton County.
Well, now, they, they-
Tell them.
They should be able to afford that, you know.
And they could have, but the chairman of the Benton County, and they felt like since he's got to do the footwork and he's got to do the running around and the-
Only thing that was in Decatur County is the electricity that was speaking, right? The sewer's in, so it, that's where I run with the two weeks and getting a dozen members, getting my address, it's complicated. I did, I rubbed my legs off too. All right, we're going to take a vote on this, let's put it on, is that all right? Let's vote. All in paper, take, we're doing something.
Are we voting on it?
Don't have a roll call vote?
Yes.
If you're voting on the contract, I say with the, if you have a resume, it's on the resume.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Polia Dye?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Pass.
Gary Furr?
Pass.
Sunny Hall?
No.
Bill Melton?
Pass.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
No.
Janet Higdon?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
No.
Darryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Pass.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Just a yes.
I'd like to change my vote to yes.
I want to say I probably backed up in that spot for a red list, but it's a Benton County sample.
She's not doing it.
About twenty-five thousand dollars.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Ward Pliant?
Yes.
You know, wish to change your vote?
Did you say yes?
Anyone else?
Yes.
So then, no, yes, two no.
I'd like to change my vote. I'll, I'll go yes.
Ten yes, two no. Ten yes, two no, and four pass.
So I guess I mean, all right.
Does, uh, Shel change her, Shel change her name? So it's ten?
It's Texas.
Ten yes, four, uh, four pass, four pass, two no, two no.
And I just want to say thank you to the commissioners who changed their vote to a yes, because you know what, I was going to be right back up there with the same people next month, same people following Monday, same people following. I'm not going to watch thirty thousand dollars run downstream for a Benton Detater Sewer.
I got it, I got it.
Reconfirm. One, it's reconfirmed.
No. Okay, Kenneth Miller, you said yes, correct? You did say yes, okay. Polia Dye said yes, Norman Fraser passed, Gary Furr passed, Sunny Hall no, Bill Melton passed, Doug Bickers yes, Rochelle Hill said pass, but she changed to yes. Janet Higdon passed, Roseanne Ward no, Darryl Hicks yes, Ronnie Hopper passed, but said yes. Mary Powers yes, Angie Hearn yes, Don Patton yes, and Ward Pliant yes. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Ten?
Turn on the next page, it's adjourned. Motion to adjourn. Sixty. All in paper, two ayes.